Should I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second by Mr. Bignani. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any walk-ins this evening?
How are you, sir?
Good.
Mr. Chairman?
Come on up. Come on up and introduce yourself.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
Everybody gets a chance to meet you.
I'm Joan Moschino. I am your new rep-elect for the -- for Situate. Just the one district in North Situate, Precinct 3. And Rep. Cantwell informed me that you're having a very nice ceremony honoring your firefighters tonight. He invited me in. I am over the moon that I have been elected. I am so honored to represent you. I am very much looking forward to working with each of you and with your wonderful town manager and all of your community activists. I get officially sworn in on January 4th. But in the meantime, I'm hoping that I can meet with you and talk, you know, offline and start to really learn about Situate and your priorities and your initiatives. I've already started, you know, meeting folks and there just seems like there's so many wonderful things going on in the community and some challenges to be sure. But, you know, Rep. Cantwell has been very gracious and generous with his time and advice and starting to introduce me to some of the things he's working on. And I'm looking forward to, you know, really taking my cue from Rep. Cantwell and adding my voice to his and really, you know, being another person to work with you and advocate for all the things and the priorities that the town of Situate needs. So I will get with your town manager soon and get in and I've been promised a tour and so I think it'll -- which is probably code four. We need you to advocate for this in the budget. But, you know, I just, for those of you, I've actually met some of you and of course, Sean, I've known these ages.
Few years.
For just a few years.
It's good that you know the code and you're not even sworn in yet.
But having been a selectman myself for six years, I'm actually very well-versed in municipal government and community advocacy and I really do understand having also helping this coastal community a lot of the challenges and then the needs of your district. So I really am very excited and I am looking forward to getting going. So, you know, thank you for a few minutes to introduce myself and I defer to my esteemed colleague and I look forward to being in front of you in the future.
Congratulations.
Do any of you have any questions for me or my credentials or anything?
Actually, I do. Joan, congratulations and we're looking forward to working with you and in your office. Obviously, Jim has been instrumental as have other reps with respect to seawalls and we're looking at both trying to augment that, increase it. We've been very successful and very fortunate with the Commonwealth in receiving funds and grants and loans. Obviously, beach renourishment is another issue that we're looking at. And obviously, your district certainly would benefit by it, not just for Situate alone but all the other coastal hang-ups and primarily your own town of Hull. So certainly would love to talk to you more about it. I can't remember how far your district goes down, if it goes down to Mannlot or is Jim is that yours?
I have everything with the exception of Precinct 3, but we always said--
But I'm saying it only because of the state road and the highway, because I know that we're -- the light that we're trying to get with the public safety building, but even the one down here, although it's out of your district, it would be helpful because we're trying to change certain things. So, no, not here, the one up on Mannlot, the one, not the fire station where in front of it, but right where Mannlot--
Have you tried Bailey?
No, Mannlot, the actual lot right there, you know, the light. So anyway, I just mentioned that to you because, yeah, we could have you hit the ground running on our end of things.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. So, no, I'd be delighted and, you know--
Congrats.
So you know that environment and climate change and sea level rise and the impacts are absolutely priority for me. I campaigned on it. You know, that was the work I did as a selectman and I'm very well-versed in it, as you all well know what storm, high-impact storms are like. So, yeah, that'll absolutely be something I'll work with you on and--
And I will say, you mentioned that the other issue that obviously is important and very important, I'm sure, to you was the opioid issue that's plaguing all our communities. So I just think that while we're focused on seawalls and infrastructure, there's certainly the social issues that, as you mentioned, that are near and dear to all of us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Congrats.
Thank you, thank you all. This is terrific.
Thanks for coming in.
You have a few minutes.
Nice meeting you.
Is there any exceptions, please, Joan?
Yes.
I second.
Second by Mr. Bignani.
Sean.
Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Tricia, you want to move on to you?
Any others? Do you want to come in there?
In a little bit.
Okay.
Can do the firefighters?
Absolutely. Like to move to the recognition of the firefighter of the year award recipients.
I'm here.
Walking by now.
I didn't know if they were all here soon as time.
Must be watching.
Perfect timing.
How are you, Chief?
Captain Brian McGowan, Lieutenant Eric Norland, firefighter Richard Den, firefighter Tom Hernan, and firefighter Matthew Regan.
How are you, Chief?
Good evening.
Do you want to just come up and give a little bit of a--
Sure, you want me to give you an overview?
Yeah, please.
What happened down in Worcester?
That'd be great.
Okay. I think I can do the standing ups, okay?
Sure.
Back on Memorial Day of the past year, we just finished our services at the G.I.R. Hall for Memorial Day. Many of us were there. We just left about a half hour after a call came in for a fire, a structural fire at Two Bailey's Island Road, which is off of Indian Trail, which is very close to the Cohasset Line, very close to Cohasset Harbor. En route, there was a lot of challenges just even getting there. We got heavy rain starting. We just had two ambulances go to South Shore Hospital, so we were short manpower. And when going out there, we called Cohasset for mutual aid, which is four or five minutes away from where we were. They were very close. They were detoured because of their parade ended up being 12 or 13 minutes. So a lot of obstacles getting there. When we get out there, Bailey's Island is about a 1,500-foot pathway. It's about 12 feet wide. The berm going out there, I know Matt Regan had gone with the ladder truck, is about 12 feet wide, eight feet wide to the outside of the tie. So a little hearing getting out there, but they got there. Once they got to the scene, Agent 3 got there first, followed by Captain McGowan, they were told there was a woman trapped in the home by her son. So heavy smoke coming from the building, heavy fire inside. They executed a line inside, they get the heavy fire knocked down inside the building, inside the home. And immediately, the fallen firefighters came in and they started the search. There was zero visibility. They were on their hands and knees, searching room by room. In one room, I think a closet opened up, all books, everything came over and then keep going to search the building. Finally found the woman in the bathroom. They gave her some assistance there and they got together and they got her out of the building going down a long set of stairs. So very challenging, probably crazy nine minutes in this building between getting the fire knocked down, getting her out. As soon as they got her out, we gave her a resuscitation effort. She was very, very sick. She almost didn't make it. She had a shift loss and she was on leave and combed for a couple of weeks. So a lot of challenges after that, but she dipped her body in the fire station several times and said she was okay and very thankful. So after this brave incident, we made a recommendation to the Department of Fire Services, to the Fire Marshal, for the firefighter of the year awards. They reviewed our application. After the application, we were not allowed to go up there in front of a panel. I thought it might be two or three people, it was about 14 people. And did our presentation on why I thought our firefighters should get the firefighter of the year award. We found that several weeks later that was accepted. And last Tuesday, November 29th, we went out to Worcester, to Mechanics Hall, beautiful Hall. They do it different places every year, it's not the same as it's been done in the past in Daniel Hall. And there were 53 total recipients in five in Situate, 10% of recipients in Situate. So we're very proud of what they did that day. They were awarded a group citation for meritorious conduct. It was given citations, it was given help by the governor and a host of other people. So last Tuesday, they received this award, as you may have seen, and I want to congratulate every one of them for their efforts and their training, their experience, their education, but really their commitment to doing everything they can for their community in that day, saving this woman's life. Congratulations. Stand up, you have to say your name. Captain Brian McGowan, Lieutenant Eric Norland, firefighter Tom Hernan, firefighter Matt Regan, firefighter Richard Den.
Thank you. Every day, I mean, you guys, I mean, especially everything we're hearing on the news the last few days, it's amazing that you can, you have the fortitude to go into a fire like that and be able to save someone's life. I just have to congratulate all of you.
And the best part is that they just keep going like it was nothing.
Right.
You know, that's the best part, you know. And I've known a lot of you guys for a long time and I've said it before for other, you know, other circumstances, but, you know, you guys make Situate a better place and I'm dead serious.
We're really fortunate to have you.
Thank you.
So thank you for your service.
So the one thing I was just going to say is, I was, we were all, I think we were all there for Memorial Day, I know I was. And I remember seeing you guys who were in your uniform and we're like, because it had been raining anyways and we canceled the parade and we said, "Let's throw the gar." And seeing you there and I'm like, we take it for granted. I think a lot of people take things for granted because it was a fun time, family time. You folks were working during a holiday officially for everybody else with their families and you're there and going back to the fire station. And what struck me was finding out that there was a massive fire and then in a moment's notice, you're in harm's way trying to help people. And that's the thing that I think a lot of people fail to understand until they're in that situation when they're called upon to help them. And, you know, obviously from Situate, in my perspective, it's great for the awards, but it's even better for the residents to know that we have people like you serving us in times of need because we tend to fall into that an awful lot with storms and other situations. So I say thank you and for me personally, because I mean, it kind of resonated, like one moment you're there standing, okay, let's take pictures. You're out in front, I think with Jim, trying to get the political ops Jim for your photos. But I'm like, but I mean, when the came, the call came, there you were. And so thank you.
And I'd just like to add, I'd like to thank you all for your service. Unfortunately, you guys have helped my family in the past couple of years a lot of times and I'm always so proud and thankful that we have this group behind us to help our town. I know that they say there's not many fires any nowadays and a lot of your work is, you know, medical-type stuff, but when a fire pops up, you still have to go in there and do what you have to do and I'm proud that you guys did it and it was a successful save. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Chev, do you want to do your--
Sure.
Okay, do here or one to the other side?
Do here.
Do here.
We have a camera here, so, perfect.
One thing I want to thank Chief, by the way, as you heard, to these meritorious awards, that is statewide recognition. And Chief, you know, as we did talk ahead of time, because when you left, I knew how difficult it was, you know, going in and discussing this with the moments, you know, this. We all were there, as you said, right to Memorial Day, I can remember, and you guys all heading off and we all go off and just enjoy time with family, not knowing that you were putting your lives on the line. And Chief, I wanted to make sure that you know, just the training that you all do to make sure with, from the call to being in the home, was it about nine minutes?
About nine minutes, yeah. It was a long run, long run.
And for everybody watching, just thinking of those types of things, where there are a lot of times in public service that you all have, there might be some times when it's the last time, you know, a lot of us talk about what we need to be ready and prepared for and Tom, and you've talked to me before when you've educated me of what you guys have to be ready to do with a moment's notice. And I'm so thrilled, and I've talked to Joan about it, and you wanted to come make sure on behalf of the Cantwell to be able to say thank you. So we have citations here for all of you. It's, I'll read one and then we'll prepare them all after, saying, "Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Captain Brian McGowan," by the way, with your 36 years of service here in Situate, "to Lieutenant Eric Norland, who came in when I did nine years ago." I think I just beat you when-- "Richard, for your three years of service here in the town, Matt Regan for your 13 years of service, and Tom Hernan, 31 total years, 11 in Cohasset, by the way, so we still go away."
Yeah.
But just noting, and I have to say, for Bailey's Island Road, I've only been out there once. That's just the whole issue of getting there that quickly, saving that life, being able to crawl on the ground to be able to get to that person. I'm glad to be here to do our little part and say thank you for your service, we're so proud of you. It's nice to know that people out there, when they think of the people that saved us day in and day out and do so much for us all, we're very proud of you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Eric.
Richard.
Richard.
Tom.
Thank you.
And Matt. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jim.
Good job. Thanks.
Please, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Al.
Sorry, I missed you there.
It's all good, it's all good.
Cap? I did. I know, I did. Stay. Yeah.
Now we're going to move on to a report of the town administrator. Tricia.
Thank you. I have a couple of items to go over. First of all, our reservoir is at 58.96 percent. So we all know it's been raining a lot and folks can sort of do their daily tally themselves just by driving by the reservoir in 3A. So we can lift some of the water bans for outdoor irrigation, as you saw in the water system update that Al issued last week. That's probably not really necessary to have to water your lawn, but definitely we're headed in the right direction. And, you know, this will probably not be on the agenda as it has been since July's regular update, but you will see it in another format, which is as you review the FY18 capital budget, there's a number of water initiatives as a result of the discussions we've been having along with Kevin Cafferty and Sean about future resiliency around water. So off the agenda in terms of the reservoir, but into the budget cycle as far as preparing for the future. For the public facilities update, I'm not going to talk too much about the library because I know Mr. Ball and some members of the trustees are coming in. Both buildings are roughly at 70%. We have them both being neck and neck for substantial completion. I do want to say, though, that we anticipate, you know, transitioning people into these buildings in February and March. That's a huge job for our police and fire, library along with Kevin Kelly and facilities to transition, to move the library out of the Harbor Community Building. We are under a very stringent deadline for our dispatch center. As you know, we're really excited about our joint dispatch center, a huge investment for the town and combined dispatch. And our cut-over from this building here to the new facility is not determined by us, it's determined by the state E-911 Systems Board, and that's slated for March 1. So we're working on cross-training staff, negotiating with the fire union on the impact of combining two very separate dispatch functions with employees and three different employee groups into one unit. So the chiefs and the deputies have been working really hard on that. The, a couple of other things I want to talk about, we're very excited about our visit from Cork County officials from Ireland on Thursday. We have some exciting, I think, events planned for them and then culminated by the signing of our Sister City Pact around 2:00 at the Maritime Center. And we'll take as many people as we can fit in for that ceremony around 2:00, 2:15, after sort of some more private functions with town officials. So we're very much looking forward to that and to all the people who've worked to pull it together in a really, really short period of time. We really had to do this very quickly because they only had the one day and the one window. They actually arrived in the United States on Sunday and are here now. There's two things that I want to talk about and I asked Representative Cantwell to stay. One is the status of our FEMA maps. As you know, we all were required to adopt the FEMA maps at our town meeting in October. Our face loss of membership in the NFIP and potential reimbursement for storms. We told all our residents that even though the maps were not perfect, we had already engaged the Woods Hole Group to file letters of map revision to correct those. The Woods Hole Group had submitted a few months ago the methodology that they wanted to use in submitting those LOMRs. In fact, that meeting happened March 29th, so many months ago. Woods Hole Group did not hear back from FEMA. There was a conference call last week in which FEMA did a 180 on some of the previous information that they had told us about the maps and that we could not file letters of map revision and that the methodology in terms of the maps that Woods Hole was going to use were still under review and they could not give a concrete answer. So after that conference call, another conference call was held with Leslie Fields of Woods Hole Group and the folks in Duxbury and Marshfield, our partners in this endeavor along with Representative Cantwell. And we decided that we would pull together a letter from our, to send to our federal delegation. And that letter from Situate went to Congressman Lynch's office. Marshfield and Duxbury obviously have Congressman Keating asking them to assist us with this yet another bottleneck, for lack of a better word, that we've been experiencing with FEMA. But I do want to turn it over to Representative Cantwell to sort of update on where we are now and what you see as the next steps and what we agreed on at our conference call. Thanks.
So that we all recall, because Situate, Marshfield, Duxbury have been at the forefront of the appeals process and proving that the maps that were done were inaccurate, we, as you know, since we had multiple phases where we were able to prove inaccuracies, we were told last March, we met with FEMA, with a regional administrator right there, that they said, "We understand that there's some inaccuracies." What we propose at this stage is that the towns adopt the maps and then the letter of map revisions will be done. The methodology we're discussing has been used in two other regions of the country, Region 2 and Region 3. It's essentially using what the US Army Corps is doing for data and FEMA would just be accepting it. So it really is not out of the norm and it was a total about-face for them to be saying just in the last two weeks that, no, they want more time to review it. They are giving us some other manners that we can still try to perfect the maps, but frankly, it's some cost pushing, it would be pushing cost to the towns, making the cost pay for all of the review. I still, I don't think there's any doubt that these maps still need to have further revision. Our consternation and our anger towards that, we're saying that we just had the meeting in March, we all agreed this was the process to follow. You told us indeed that this is what you wished for us to proceed with. Town's done its part, Duxbury Marshall has done their part, our experts are ready to go, and it is very much just kind of pulling the rug out from under folks. So where we go from here? We are, we're probably going to do a trip to DC because we're finding our Region 1, the administrator who we were at that meeting with, who said he was going to go and present this, seems to have not been able to present that case. So we've already spoken on the conference call we had most recently with staff from Congressman Keating's office. I just got a call tonight from Congressman Lynch's office, they've thrown up a letter. So we will do a face-to-face meeting in DC. We'll be discussing with the FEMA folks about saying, you know, we know, the first ask is that they follow through allowing us to do the letter of map revision, which we're all pretty comfortable with, by the way, does happen a lot. Quincy's done them. The real sticking issue was what methodology was to be used. And we'll be pushing hard about them accepting what Leslie Fields has already reviewed and says is appropriate and what we know they've already done in other areas of the country. So if we can do that and be successful, then the burden won't be on the towns to have to do. The third alternative, which they were pushing us towards, which would be our having to put out tens of thousands of dollars to, and have us have to do all the work and then present it to FEMA for acceptance. So we just want to make sure that when we, we had this change of activity from FEMA, we thought it was very important to make sure that we keep doing updates so that the board's not caught off guard. The LOMR process would have been done in a matter of months and that was our intent to hopefully come back to town meeting. We thought it could have been as soon as, I was optimistic saying it could have been, you know, earlier in 2017. This definitely is something that we have to address right away so that we can get these maps perfected. But appreciate the opportunity to come and do an update.
So the majority of the issues are with the regional office?
Yeah, yes. Because we've met, some of you were there that first meeting, we've, every time we go up to the Region 1 and we, and our towns are, from our point of view, famous for this, but maybe from FEMA, we have done so much good work to point out some deficiencies. And I will say that having the professionals that the town has hired, Leslie Fields is fantastic. So the frustration for us is that our regional administration, it appears, did not convey all of the information that we had as far as what the methodology we used. I do know that Leslie Fields has been on the phone with people from DC, but we just, we need to get our federal senators and reps to be across the table from the FEMA folks to say, here is, here's, took place the meeting here, the letters we did, we, actually, right after that meeting back in March, we wrote up what we believed to be the agreement. So we just have to hold their feet to the fire. I, the final thing is we have a new administration coming in, so there's going to be some turnover. You know, I do think that meeting needs to take place, Tricia, I think you're right, it needs to take place in DC. I don't believe we'll be doing that in December, so. We'll just come back and make sure to do a report back to the board early next year.
Jim, where's Region 2 and 3?
They're down, one is like in the Maryland area, the furthest going a little further south, so they, they're similar--
Both East Coast?
East Coast.
Okay.
Yeah, East Coast. And, you know, we have good standing for, we know, at least from our experts saying that they've already, in her calls, they said, "Well, we've done it for these other regions." She was led to believe that this was, the Army Corps data was, you know, and would have no issues. FEMA now is just putting on the brakes saying, "Well, we want time and money to review those." So for our congressional representatives, what they're hearing is either they're going to have to get FEMA to change its mind and say, "No, this is perfectly acceptable," or they're going to have to come up with funds to allow FEMA to review what another state-- it's, one federal agency's already done the work and another one wants to review. It's frustrating. But, but we always, for people watching, we want them to know that I always come back to say how proud I am of our towns. We've done such a great job to this point to get the appeals that were done and found to be acceptable, to get maps changed in some significant manners and to keep showing that the maps are yet to be perfected. So I want people to know that this board continues to lead things and I'm happy to continue to be a partner. And we fully expect that we'll, we will be in DC making the case and then we'll come back and report sometime early next year.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks for standing on top of it.
Thank you so much.
Hold on one second. The last thing, Mr. Chair, I have my report is that last Thursday, there was a symposium sponsored by the town and Coastal Zone Management, North-South River Water Association, and a number of other organizations on sea level and climate change. And there were over 150 attendees to that and it was standing room only. And I think that's because of the heightened awareness of those issues for coastal communities. It was specifically for the South Shore. So it wasn't statewide or anything, it was just for the South Shore. And had a number of case studies and some professors from UMass Dartmouth and MAPC about climate change and coastal impacts. And I think, you know, we can feel very proud of the work we've done here in Situate. I think we're well-positioned unlike a lot of the other communities because we have our coastal resiliency study and we have Ms. Durfee over there, who everybody wants Nancy Durfee now. But we also talked a little bit about the commitment of tax dollars that have to be carved away to make that a priority. And just as a personal observation, I am literally off the plane from Iceland. There is no snow in Iceland. There is no snow in Iceland right now. It's December 6th. It is 48 degrees. It was 80 degrees once last month there. And the highest they usually get in the summer is 65 degrees. The road we took into a glacier was eight kilometers from the highway and it used to be right at the highway. So, you know, we observed at the symposium last Thursday that if this was held five years ago, the CZM was doubtful that half the room would be full. And then less than five years, it was maximum capacity. So it was really to get towns to work together because we're just Situate, but what Marshfield does and Duxbury and Hull and Cohasset all affect us and to start those collaborative partnerships so we can all work together to address the coastal impacts. And it wasn't just sea level and climate change too. It was, you know, shoring up the shore, how to deal with business development and residential development along the shore. And it was really, really informative and we had good attendance from folks here. And Jim was the speaker and I didn't know if you wanted to add anything, Rep.
Not much I have to add, but Trish was the opening speaker to begin the whole plenary session and we are, it is such an honor representing Situate because people come and see Nancy, Trish, all of you, that our town really gets to be the rock star for coastal adaptation and people looking to all the things that we've been able to do. So there was some discussion, as we should, talking about the need for funds for seawalls that you mentioned earlier. A lot of discussions about what other technology can take place. The one thing, the major takeaway, though, is that we do so much better when we act people come and see Nancy, Trish, all of you, that our town really gets to be the rock star for coastal adaptation, and people looking to all the things that we've been able to do. So there was some discussion, as we should, talking about the need for funds for seawalls, that you mentioned earlier. A lot of discussions about what other technology can take place. The one thing, the major takeaway, though, is that we do so much better when we act as a region, and this is going to require a state and federal commitment for this type of infrastructure, that clearly the triple threat of rising sea levels, more frequent storms, and crumbling infrastructure. We know people debating all the time of what's causing rising sea level. I don't care.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, whatever it is. And people can debate how fast it's going to happen, but our job, as you've been doing so well, and with Trish and Nancy, our job is just to say, you know, it doesn't matter how fast it's happening, we just want to get ahead of it, to be prepared. We talked about more frequent storms. I've been a state rep for eight years. We've had seven major storms. Not my fault, I keep saying that we.
It's not mine.
So, and the infrastructure is where we're going to keep, and that's where there's a lot of jobs, there's a lot of interest, and we will, and it's neat that we have the Cork County folks coming on Thursday, and we're going to have the Dutch come back to visit us early next year. We'll start talking, we'll be the international hub right here in Situate to keep making a difference. But thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate the opportunity to come and say hello, and look forward to, happy holidays, everyone, Merry Christmas. We'll look forward to seeing you in the new year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks for everything.
Yosa?
Yep.
We're going to move on to an interview, a board and committee applicants for the Animal Control Board. I hope I don't do his name wrong. Ron Sisleck?
You're good, excellent.
Hey, come on up, Ron. Just give us your name and address, and tell us a little bit about yourself and your interests.
Want his wife to come up, too?
Yeah, actually, Lynn, your wife could come up.
Yeah, Nancy Darbison, we're all kind of a team.
Come on up. Don't exclude anybody. So. Just all of you, just like name and address and.
Oh, okay. Ron Sisleck, 109 Maple Street, okay?
Lynn Sisleck, 109 Maple Street.
Nancy Rashid.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
14 Buttermilk Circle.
All right, just a little bit about, I mean, I looked at your backgrounds and things like that, just so, just for the, the audience, just a little bit about your background.
So Lynn and I have been in Situate for 12 years. We came here when I retired. I retired from General Motors, 31 years, 21 years in their North American operations and various corporate staffs and car divisions, and 10 years in their international with assignments in Switzerland, Japan, and South Korea. So we came here, and we've been volunteering at the animal shelter for 11 years, so we're animal lovers for sure. And we know Kim Stewart very well, and all the wonderful work that she does with the animals. And we understand that there's some members of the Animal Control Board that are ending their term, and if we can be of help, we'd like to help out on that. So that's basically what we're doing.
Are you speaking for both of you? Yeah.
No, you can speak to him.
Yeah, we've always been animal lovers, and we're from Michigan, and I always volunteered somewhere at a shelter. And I have to say, the shelter here is exceptional. It has over 140 volunteers, all committed, and the people are really great, and we've made wonderful friendships, but also the care of the animals, which is, you know, our big concern. And so we're happy to help out, anything that comes up in town, or if they want our opinion or anything input, we'd be glad to do it.
I've lived here for 28 years. My husband came here with the Navy, retired after 20, and went into the airlines, so we had moved around a lot with the Navy. We picked Situate at random, and we were really happy that we did. I was a librarian at Norwell and Marshfield for many years. When I retired, I started volunteering at the shelter, and I've been there for seven years. I've always had dogs, love animals, and I just want to help out.
Have you been to any of the meetings, any of the?
We've had one. We were invited to one meeting, all of us.
To observe, yes.
Yeah, to observe.
Yeah.
I don't know if they have another one yet.
They have them monthly. Who's the liaison now, you? Yeah, I was liaison for a couple of years. They do a lot of work. You'd think that it was just, you know, not as active as a committee as it is. There's quite a few things, and it ranges in terms of, you know, the activities that they deal with, dog bites or, or just other types of things. So it's, it's quite an interesting committee, so I'm glad you guys are volunteering to be involved.
We're looking forward to it.
Yeah.
I too want to thank you, 30, almost 30 years combined, that's pretty neat. And I too agree, I'm not real familiar with the shelter, you know, my mother has gotten the dogs there, and I know people that have, and I think we do have a nice shelter compared to some of the other towns.
Come and see. Yeah.
I have a dog, I have a dog. Oh, my wife would kill me if I run out of one.
Give you a tour.
But, but thank you. I was going to ask, how many dogs you guys have typically, like Susan Fippen had six or seven, that's usually what happens, you know. But, no, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Just a question, Lorraine, how many openings are there at the project? Three, okay.
Well, I don't think we could have three better-prepared candidates come forward.
Oh, thank you.
So, thank you.
And we will be voting on this later on, you don't have to hang around if you don't want to. You're welcome to if you'd like to.
All right.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you, have a great evening. Thank you.
Moving on to a discussion of vote of the Hummerock Coastal Resiliency Grant. Nancy Durfee, Coastal Resource Officer, how are you, Nancy?
Good, how about you? How's everybody tonight?
Hello, Nancy.
Hi. Thanks for having me.
Certainly.
That's, the symposium, I have to say, was really wonderful. It was great to see so many people come out, and there were people who were turned away. That's how many people were interested in coming to hear what had happened at the symposium, so.
Did anybody videotape it?
I don't think they had the capacity to do it at the center that they had it in Norwell.
Okay.
So there was, it did come up amongst the discussion of the group, the team that was developing the symposium, but there was no way to videotape it, unfortunately. The good news is, though, I believe that we hope to kind of spin it into having more discussions and having people be more willing to, it seems like more people are interested and possibly willing to volunteer to spend more time talking about the issues and helping kind of develop the policies and understandings of what we can do. The one thing for Situate is, we definitely need implementation funding. Implementation, yeah. We're past the planning, we're into implementation, which is really a good place to be. Speaking of that, so I am here tonight to, to let you know that the town of Situate requested and received funding assistance through the FY17 Coastal Resiliency Grants through the Massachusetts Coastal Zone Management for a total of $138,000. This grant will allow us to do conceptual plans and designs for a dune and beach nourishment and potential, a section of elevation of road along Central Ave in Hummerock. We are all aware that this section receives stone, cobble, sand, overwash on frequent basis, specifically during storm events, but also we're now seeing it occur during astronomically high tides. Not at a large amount, but it certainly is occurring. So this will help us begin to address the issues along this segment. It also segues into the assessment that we just finalized and released, the assessment for coastal erosion, and that is one of the priorities, is Hummerock, and this particular stretch of Hummerock is, is one of those priorities that we have. So we, we put out the request on September 8th, 2016, and the proposals were due on October 4th of 2016. We solicited six qualified coastal engineering firms, and we posted in the Construction Journal as well. We only received one proposal, though, so, and we were thinking that because this work is so specialized, that we didn't really get the, you know, the attraction that we had hoped for. But we did receive a good proposal. It was reviewed on its merit of technical approach, the project management, the related experience, and its schedule, because we have to have this concluded by June 31st of this, of this coming year, 2017. Our review team consisted of Sean McCarthy from the Engineering Department, Pete, Patrick Galvin from Conservation, Laura Harbottle from the Planning Department, and we also worked closely with Kevin Cafferty at the Department of Public Works in order to create this opportunity for us, as well as he, you know, put input as well to what we had asked for. We also received remarks and comments from Coastal Zone Management Team, Jason Burtner and Rebecca Haney, which have come here frequently, and Patricia Bowie, who's actually the grant organizer for CZM. So we base this upon the strength of their proposal, their knowledge of the local area, as well as their public process, and the expertise and their experience working with Situate on past projects. And we hope that you would move to sign the contract so we can begin to get the work done. I have given the contract to Lorraine as well, just in case.
Any questions?
Yeah, just to go over some of the numbers of it.
Sure.
So it's a CZM grant.
It is.
It's for 100, we get $103,000 from them.
Exactly.
And we have to pay 25% of it or include 25% of it. Go ahead.
So 25% is either, is half of that is part of our salaries, and the other half is cash match.
So that's, that's great. And it, again, it's more of a plan.
A conceptual plan.
As opposed to the implementation that you were talking about before, but those are the first steps. Can you tell us what section of Central Ave it is? I know you go in, go down to the left. How far down is it?
Right, so you would go down towards the, the split, where the cliff.
Yeah.
So it starts a little bit up the cliff, and then down towards about 130 Central Ave. Now, not all of that section will be included in the elevation of the roadway, but that will be the area with which we will be looking at throughout this project. And it's good to have the conceptual designs, because it'll help people visualize what it is that we would be proposing for that area, which I think is extremely important at this time.
So I don't know where 130 is, but I, you go to the split, and then you come back.
Right, so Atlantic Ave is, Atlantic Ave, I believe, is one of the, the cross streets, and it would be, you know, just a little before that.
Before that, okay, great.
Within that area.
It's right before Fourth Cliff, that area?
From Fourth Cliff, yes.
That's right.
At the base of Fourth Cliff where you go.
And that's it.
So about where, who went with me on that tour out there? I think you did. Probably about where those things were, the big machinery.
Around three-quarters of the way down to the left, and then up to Fourth Cliff.
So how far, how long of a stretch on Central Ave are we looking at, Nancy?
It's about a mile.
A mile.
Oh, it is that?
So it goes from Fourth Cliff going back, then.
Right.
This grant's going to, this project would be a mile?
The, the design would cover about the area stretch of a mile of that stretch.
That would be from the fork all the way over to the bridge, I would say.
Bridge, almost.
Yeah, I would say so.
So I would, then I'm roughly off on my numbers. It would be just to the Atlantic Ave.
The hottest hit, Nancy, is right at the split.
There's 80 homes there that we've identified that are hardest hit, so that's the, the ground zero that we concentrate.
On both sides?
No, just.
Just the ocean side.
The ocean side.
Wow, that's a good.
So it would include the dune and beach nourishment out in the front, which is absolutely imperative. We cannot do anything else until we get that ocean further away from the road, and then we can't do, and you can't do the elevation of the road unless you do those pieces, because you're actually putting people in harm's way if we create a berm behind them. What we want to do is protect out in front, and then that would protect the private homeowners as well as our public infrastructure along that road, and possibly stop us from having to shovel that out after every storm event.
That would be nice.
That would be nice.
So that's, but that's private property.
On the beach side.
Yeah.
Easements would be required, yes, absolutely. But the education and the opportunity to see the conceptual plans in advance will help people to understand what exactly we would be proposing. It's actually the next step for, for being able to have that conversation with homeowners.
And those are the people that are all these, at all these meetings. They understand that, and they want.
They've been very active.
They, they want that, so I don't know that the easements would necessarily be as big of a problem as another time.
We hope so.
Can I ask you a question, Nancy?
Sure, sure.
With regards to the, the work that Applied Coastal's going to do, are they going to include costs for the infrastructure as well as any cost projections that private citizens might incur with regards to those that have, don't have tanks or have?
Right. So, I mean, we can definitely have them take a look, at least, at the public infrastructure cost, when the road is elevated, how much would that cost to not only elevate the road, but the water lines as well as any of the other infrastructure under the road, or even the, the elevation of the electricity along that stretch as well, would have to be taken a look at, and I'm, I'm certain that they would provide the cost for that.
I would think that would be part of it, though.
Exactly.
It would have to.
Right. I'm not exactly sure that they would do each individual homeowner, but we'll definitely take a rough look at what that might look like, and give them some, some ideas.
Right. Last thing I want to create is a bowl.
We don't want, we can't create a bowl.
Yeah.
We can't. That would not, I would not support that as your Coastal Resource Officer. That would not be a good idea, yeah.
We need a bridge.
Will some of those people have input in this process?
Absolutely. So there will be two public meetings as well for them to take a look at the designs before we solidify anything, and then bring that back to them again, to say, "Hey, did we get it right?"
I'd like to think that a lot of those people have been down there for generations, so they have a, you know, pretty good idea of what's going on.
Yeah.
They've been hearing about it for a while. Nancy's been socializing it quite a bit in the past six months at the different coastal meetings, so they're, they're prepared for this.
The only problem is, you know, it has to be done by June.
It does have to be done by June.
A lot of those people are summer people, so they're not, not going to be around, so.
I'll make sure that they're included as soon as possible in any ways possible that we can. We do have a list of the homeowners already that we have reached out to in a survey that we did last winter time, so we'll continue to make sure that we're talking to the residents in advance.
This is really their request. I mean, they've wanted that, that roadway, so. That's great. Want a motion?
Please.
Will the Board of Select and Vote award the contract for providing science, engineering, and prioritization services for elevating roadway improvements and dune beach nourishment along North Hummerock for improved coastway resiliency to Applied Coastal Research and Engineering of Mashpee, Massachusetts for up to $137,500.
Second? Second round, Mr. Danahue, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for continuing to get these grants, it's awesome.
Yeah, it is fun.
Keep them coming.
I'm really glad we can.
Thank you, Nancy.
Bye, guys.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
You, too.
Next, we have a discussion vote on the Clap Road land CPC application revision. Tricia?
Thank you.
Thanks.
So what I've just handed out is, in the black, parcel three, parcel one, and parcel two, is the lands that the town acquired when we did the Clap Road land swap, now sort of known as Bartlett Fields in the West End. So at the Board's request, I submitted CPC application by the deadline for the parcel three part. Parcel one and parcel two, when we got that land, is conservation, okay? But parcel three is unrestricted. For us, hopefully, we, we supported and acquired this land with the specific intent of athletic fields. And I want to remind folks about that, and as the Board, that was our sole intent in negotiating for this land, was so we could hopefully develop more athletic fields. So the CPC application was for $25,000 to do design and engineering on this area. We've already completed a survey, Lucas Engineering surveyed for the wetlands. There is a wetlands line that runs sort of from, to the northwest corner here. But it was 25,000 to get some, some conceptual designs to see what we could actually do for athletic fields. Right prior to me attending the CPC meeting on the Board's behalf, Dan Fennelly contacted me, he's on the CPC, and asked a number of questions about the application, and also asked about the three other town-owned parcels that are proximate to there, and didn't it make sense if we expanded the scope of the application, asked for more money, and included that in the conceptual design and engineering? Those are the three squares that you see highlighted on the map that I just printed out. So I represented at the CPC meeting that I thought the Board might be amenable to that, but I couldn't unilaterally make that decision. So simply, all we're doing tonight is if you're in favor of that, then you would vote it to include the additional parcels, increase the cost of our application request to $40,000. And then I can send that amended application to the CPC with the board's support.
And that's in yellow, right, Tricia?
It's the yellow. And we checked them all through assessors and they're unencumbered. They're not conservation or anything like that.
The, the map's cut off a little bit. Is there frontage? Is there an entrance point there?
Let me see. I've got a lot of maps here that probably shows that. No.
So they'd have to go access through parcel three and around.
It looks at that right now, or isn't it? It doesn't show direct, it's possible, but it's hard to tell. This is the map, but Dan.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I don't think so, Tony.
Dan thought at the recreation meeting, he thought there was another entrance because I told, and everyone agreed, that in tomorrow's point or someone's point that just mentioned it, that's a pretty narrow entrance to get to that parcel. Could we take a good look at that and see if there's any other, you know, keep that, but if there's any other entrance?
Well, it would, that, it would narrow down the potential there to see what the frontage is there on the parcels that you see in the yellow there, but that's what we have to find out.
Right.
So my only reservation on this is the entryway off Clap Road. I walked it with Moore last year when we're looking at the devotion property across the way for another swap. And I vividly remember that it's a lane with stone walls on either side. I don't think it can fit two cars. So I have no problems with trying to expand it. It's just access is going to be paramount to be able to get into an area. If it's one way in, we need to be able to gain access. Actually, Tony, you mentioned here, this looks like a lot there. So I think that's something that we need to, before spending a great deal of money, is knowing whether or not we can gain access to those back lots, the ones that you've highlighted, Tricia, to be able to circulate traffic to come in and come out. Otherwise, I don't know how you're going to do it or how we are going to do it with, without getting some, buying more land or obtaining an easement. And that's where I'm like, I agree with doing the plans and trying to do it with CPC, but I think we're going to have, the first question I'd ask, how do you get into it?
If they drew a rendition of it, and I think in that rendition, they did have one lane going in and out. I just, from these maps, it's hard to tell if that is, if it's wide enough or not.
It's supposed to be 40 feet, isn't it?
Yep.
I thought it was 40 feet.
I think it is.
Right. It's not perfect, John, I, I agree. But if, if we did have another, even a narrow access from Clap, we could make one one-way and make the other in and out.
Or you can make just a loop up right. The, the one at the bottom here, the one that's highlighted, I'd love to see the assessor's map because it looks as though, Tony was pointing out from the one that you're showing us in yellow, that it almost touches the roadway and, and from the map here, it looks like there's something coming down. I just, I'd like to know, that's all.
It's just cut off, we can't tell.
So maybe.
I wonder what's below that.
Maybe it does.
The road is below it, but we just don't know how much land is between there.
The road is right there.
Right. Well, I don't know what Clap does after that. No, definitely, definitely, well, here it is.
Well, there's another narrow access there. You can see it just as narrow.
She's saying.
Right on the bottom of parcel two, five dash, five dash, three.
So does that come all the way to the road, Trish? Can you tell?
It's hard to tell. That's, so, so we can run that down. But part of the reason is to sort of get the engineering and to see what is possible.
Well, during the engineering process, isn't that what they're going to evaluate?
Yeah, and I, and it's, it might not be ideal, but there is, you know, you can have traffic in one way and out the other. We'd just mostly like to have people, you know, in signage and, well, you know, we simply don't know. We know how wet it is, but we don't know what may or may not be possible. And if what we originally want to do is impossible, then we have other alternatives we can explore.
So did you say we know how wet the yellow area is?
Yep. We've completed a survey of that area.
So the yellow area is pretty dry.
The lower portion is, if you have your map, there is a wetland line running roughly right here, all the way up.
Yeah, but what about down here, this section?
The highlighted area?
No, we don't have that section.
We don't have that yet.
But we can do that, either as part of or prior to.
Because it's next to parcel two. Okay. Okay. I mean, I think it makes sense if we're going to do, if we need the space to do a complex. Look at the whole thing.
I agree.
Yeah, that's.
That's it.
Can't see, that's the town.
There's stuff underneath or in the back, too, John.
But that's, that's what, this is what was drawn up.
Yeah.
She's saying the wetlands are in this area right here.
Yeah. Does it say how wide that entrance is?
That's 40, Sean's right, it's 40 feet.
It's 24. Proposed 24. Maybe that's, maybe it's adequate enough. If you have two ways in. I mean, it could be like Forge's Field, which is actually, actually a beautiful field where people go in and, yeah, they kind of meander around to get to various fields. It's a great layout in the town of Plymouth. Here we go, now, here we go. Town of Situ, oh, there is access here.
Good.
According to this, town of Situ, assessor's reference, which is the one right here. So you do have two points of access.
Where is that in relation to Grove Street, John? Right opposite at the corner?
It's almost at the intersection of Grove Street.
Right.
You know, since you, you take Grove Street here, you come down. It's two houses down, and then you can get in.
Good.
That's good.
But again, to Moore's point, we don't know if that's wet, and that's what we need to do.
Great.
Okay.
Motion?
Yes.
Move the Board of Selectmen amend the existing Clap Road CPC application to $40,000 to include, is it two or three additional properties?
Three.
It says two in here, should I?
Yeah.
Is that, should it be three?
Yeah.
Uh, three additional town-owned parcels.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion?
Yeah, just to let you know, even the second lot here, that has frontage. So there's adequate frontage. Yep. You shouldn't have any problems with that access.
That one goes to the street too?
This one goes to the street too.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's keep that mapping here.
Hmm?
She gave it to me last couple of weeks ago.
The street from your house, too.
That's that.
That, yeah. Let's leave it there.
Next, we have a discussion vote on the withdrawal from the Mayflower Municipal Health.
Mr. Chairman, I will recuse myself on this matter. Thank you.
Nancy Holt and Sue Shalou from Cook &amp; Company. How are you, Sue?
Good, Howard.
Nice to see you.
So I'm just going to set this up for the board. We've talked about this at least three or four meetings as regular updates. And I know you have, sorry for the length, lengthy memo from Nancy and I. So to bring you up to speed, I'll just recap quickly. We started meeting with our insurance advisory committee a couple of months ago because we had some concerns about the long-term financial efficacy of the current healthcare provider we have, Mayflower Municipal Health Group. And we've been working independently and with a number of other towns at looking at various options. Cook &amp; Company, Sue Shalou, our insurance consultant, obtained quotes for us. We got a favorable quote for Mass Interlocal Insurance Association, MYA. As you know, we've had some increases in health insurance last year, notably a 15% increase after four years of zero increases and a 1.5 in FY16. And a lot of that has to do with the way the revenues and claims and units are handled at Mayflower and the governance. So we got a quote from MYA and met with the insurance advisory committee to share our concerns. We had six insurance advisory committee meetings. The MYA quote does not replicate 100% the healthcare options we provide to our employees now. There's a few minor changes that we've enumerated in the memo the board has. So we are meeting with the public employee committee to mitigate those changes on the Harvard healthcare piece. We've had two meetings with the PEC so far. I continue, a lot of the same members are of the insurance advisory committee, so they're not different people. I've been really impressed with the level of concern, information, intelligence, collaboration, civility that we've had with all 11 unions. And I'm very confident that we'll be able to reach an agreement that will be before the board December 20th. Related but completely separate is that we must notify Mayflower of our intent to withdraw before December 31st of each year. So that is why this is before the board tonight. However, as a good faith gesture, that vote will be contingent upon us reaching an agreement with the public employee committee on the mitigation. We have a 30-day window in which to do that. We can extend it by mutual agreement. If we can't come to resolution, it goes to a panel set up by the state. I'm quite confident that we're going to be able to reach an agreement. And we'll have Sue assisting with us on that. So I really want to turn this over to Sue Shalou of Cook &amp; Company, Nancy Holt, who's been going to the steering committee meetings for the last two years and knows this stuff inside out and did that in her former position. And I, we're also really fortunate, I think, to have Jack Sherry here tonight for group benefit strategies. And Jack is the insurance consultant to the Mayflower Municipal Healthcare Group. I invited him to attend tonight. As your chief administrative officer, I'm also the chief fiscal officer for the town. We went into this process being very clear with the employees that we are not changing their healthcare. And we've committed to that and we're, have kept our word on that. This is not an issue about their healthcare. This is an issue about the management of the entity that is providing our healthcare. And that it is entirely up to the board what, how they wish to proceed. However, Nancy and I believe very strongly, we have a fiduciary responsibility to show that the town has solvency and predictability, communication, and transparency in the over $5 million you spend each year on healthcare insurance and our employees do. On average, we have a 53-47 split on our health insurance. So when our health insurance goes up $800,000 a year, as it did last year, that's on our employees equally as well on the 53-47%. So understandably, they're equally concerned. And hopefully tonight, you'll vote contingent on us reaching a PEC agreement. And I'll turn it over to Nancy, Sue, and, and Jack.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. As Tricia mentioned, and was incorporated in the memo and the materials that were provided to the board in your packet, so far, two members have withdrawn from Mayflower so far. The town of Rockland, which we previously advised you of, and as of December 1st, the town of Hingham has withdrawn. So 16% of the group is now withdrawn. And that's also 16% of the Medicare plans are now no longer part of that group. So that is also something of concern to us. It's two out of the top five in the number of subscribers. And that's subscribers only, not actually dependents as well. One of the things we did want to highlight, especially I wanted to highlight to you is on the option of the MYA plan that we provided within the documents, the last five years of ranges that the MYA plan does and how they operate that plan in that every year the board votes as to what the range of increases are going to be. And then every unit within, there's over 100 units that participate in this program. It's seven times larger than the Mayflower group and has been in existence since 1992. They assign an increase specific to that unit based on their claims experience. So every unit is different. Every unit has a different plan design. So no one's plan design is the same. We're not, there's not going to be a vote by the MYA board that will affect us that we then have to bargain. We control our own plan design. So if we decide somewhere down the line that our costs are really escalating as a collaborative effort with our employees, we want to look at something, at potential options to change those things that could potentially benefit all parties. We have the ability to do that and do that as a partner with MYA. That's not something we can currently do. We have no ability to do anything independent of Mayflower currently other than to move, say, to a benchmark plan. That's about it. So that's something that's a benefit to us as well as to, on both sides of the table, the employees as well as to management.
Nancy, can I ask you a question about that?
Certainly.
So we're our own group and we're based on our own claims history?
We have the benefit of being in a bigger group, so we have the benefit of sharing our risks. So any claim over $75,000 is transferred into a claim that's shared equally with all other members. Anything below that is our own claims experience, and that's what we get rated upon. So.
And do you find, and maybe Sue, you know, this better, do you find that better that you're not diversifying it over a larger group of people?
You, so you will be part of a bigger pool. So when you're with MYA, there's actually two aspects to the rating, as Nancy said. Unlike Mayflower, where you're rated as one big pool, what MYA does it is they actually look at your own claims experience. But every year, they actually set a rate range. So in January at the MMA meeting, they vote on a rate range to say, no participating community will get less than a certain increase and will not get more than a certain increase. So you do have some protections there. And as Nancy just said, you're sharing in the large losses. So MYA will actually extract claims over $75,000 for each of their groups, pool it together, and then reapportion it back to the participating communities. So even though your claims experience does play into it, it's not like you're going to a carrier and being rated solely on your own merit. It's sort of a combination.
And do you find that's better for communities our size? Or, I mean, if you have a bad claim year?
It can go either way. Yeah. I can't necessarily say that Mayflower's rating mechanism is better than MYA's or vice versa because, as you said, depending on the year, it could be different. In Mayflower, you could be subsidizing some other groups, which you probably are, other communities that have worse claims experience than you do. Conversely, if you have bad experience in some years, you could be subsidized. But MYA sort of combines all of that together.
And the other thing that was shown in that range was what the average increase was. So just to have a sense for a larger group, what the average increase was. That doesn't mean that we would pay, be paying more or less. Right now, as Sue mentioned, we're performing better than other entities in Mayflower, the average of Mayflower. So we're, that's a positive to us. We also wanted to highlight the fact that, that the insurance advisory committee did vote to not continue with Mayflower. They did not want to have Mayflower come in and speak to them. And they did take a vote to move forward with the MYA option. So there were two votes by the insurance advisory committee that we did want to advise you of as well. So I think that's very important, that the fact that they, with all the data that had been presented to them and all the data they could make themselves, could get from Mayflower's website, they decided that they didn't want to hear anymore. And Mayflower did attend some of our insurance advisory committee meetings. So they were there and offered to come back on as an agenda item. So that was something else that was important to bring to the board. We have in the past given information to the board about the Mayflower fund balance and how it's been used and how there is no policy in place currently as to how it should be built up, how it should be used. There is a reserve policy that it's supposed to be 10% of annualized operating expenses, which is about 13 million. But as of the last meeting, they voted, they, one of the quotes from the last steering committee meeting was that it was a guideline, which is not something you want to hear. You don't want to hear that the fund reserve policy is a guideline. It's policy. It was actually adopted. This is what it should be. You were skating very close to being below it as of the information that was released September 30th. They were at 13.5. They finished the year at 13.8. And the rates that were voted for fiscal '17 included the possibility of a subsidy of up to $8.5 million, which would take the fund balance down to between 5 and 6 million. So far, claims are running well this year. It doesn't mean that they're going to end up, ending the year well. It doesn't mean that they're not. So that was always a gamble when that rate was voted as to how much of that fund balance, if any, they would use in order to maintain that 15% increase. The carrier recommended rates for fiscal '17 were 23%. So that's one of the concerns that we have shared with you is that delta between the 23 and the 15% and what would actually happen. So I know the board probably has questions, and I'm glad to answer any questions. And if Sue has anything that she wants to offer as well, Sue?
Yeah, I think they, obviously, Tricia and Nancy covered most of it. The only other point that I think I would add is that the town, town management did have the option of going to the insurance advisory committee and then putting forth a proposal to the public employee committee to stay with Mayflower but to actually change the benefit design and put everybody into the benchmark plans. Right now, you have the Rate Saver Plan, which is sort of the middle plan that's offered by Mayflower. You do offer the benchmark plan and you do, just have a handful of people in it. But there's high deductibles and coinsurance in those plans. So you did have the option of trying to change the benefit design. The advantage to switching to MYA is that you're preserving the benefits that the employees currently have. There, there's a very few small tweaks to people who are currently in the Harvard plan, but that's why we're discussing mitigation with the public employee committee.
Switching to the benchmark, obviously, employees lose more of the benefits.
That would have been a drastic benefit change.
Yeah, we don't want that.
It certainly would have been a shift in cost. And there is a proposal, a recommended proposal from the steering committee in Mayflower that will be voted upon tomorrow that would make the benchmark plan a GIC clone, which would increase more of that shift. It would decrease the premium and supposedly that would stay with those plans. But it should be noted, there were only two pure benchmark entities in Mayflower, and they were Rockland and Hingham. They have now withdrawn. So basically, there is a very small benchmark presence within the Mayflower group currently or will be as of July 1.
So what's the increase going to be if we go to, is it MYA? Is that?
So for the HMO plans, we have a quoted rate for July 1 of 11.9%. For the PPOs, it's approximately 3.9%. And then there would be a reduction on the Medigap plans, the Blue Cross Bush Shield Medex, MedX, as that would be going to a MedX 2 with a prescription drug plan. So there's no change in the actual medical coverage at all. It's just that it would be two plans combined. So you would now have a card for your medical coverage, and a card for your prescription drug coverage as well. That is also something that Mayflower is looking at, and will be coming before the General Board tomorrow for a vote.
So it'd be 11 percent, 12 percent increase, instead of 15 to 23?
Correct. That's what we're estimating for Mayflower, based on the projections that Sue has run.
It's a projection.
Right.
We don't, obviously, we don't know how they're going to vote.
And that's a difficult equation, knowing those numbers. Because as Mayflower puts their numbers forth, and they're using some of the subsidies, we end up in a deficit the middle of next year. We own that deficit, correct?
Correct. So that, that's one of the concerns that we've had right along, is that we have no share in the surplus. But if there is a deficit, we have, we have to take a piece of that deficit, our proportionate share. And where more groups are leaving, that is certainly a concern.
Right. But may, I mean, not that I want to stay with them, but they haven't had an increase in how many years?
They had an increase in the last two years.
They have not had an increase in the last two years?
No, they had an increase in the last two, that they had three years of 0 percent, where they used fund balance to offset the rate increases.
They're basically sucking off their reserves to keep their rates low.
Well, what happened in 2012 is seven communities bargained the new healthcare changes. So essentially, what that meant is we required our employees to pay more deductibles. We saved money. We did a medication plan with them. They, they saved some money under our mitigation plan. But many of the towns in the unit of Mayflower kept the same old plans. So the savings that those communities realized by going, we went to Rate Saver, as Nancy mentioned, Hingham and Rockland went to Benchmark. Those were even higher deductibles. Those revenues were used to subsidize the increases to the towns that did no change. And when claims continued to get worse, and last year was a very bad year, they started drawing down the trust fund. So we looked at, actually leaving four years ago, and Sue ran the numbers. But it didn't really make sense, because the rates were good. And 7 million of the trust fund at that point was technically ours. We couldn't get it back. But that was a lot of money to walk away from. Well, all that interest in terms of the town is gone. So again, it sort of makes sense that now is the time. And Maya has been asked to quote over 22 communities for FY '18 already. They don't choose all the communities that ask them to provide quotes. They are very interested in Situate coming, because of our claims experience, and the management of health insurance on the town. So, and we've been very, very happy with our general liability insurance with them. I don't know, Jack, if you want to say anything, or it's totally up to you.
Well, I'm Jack Sherry. I'm from Group Benefit Strategies. Our company represents eight joint purchase groups, including the Mayflower group. And first of all, I'm not here to argue, because I have great respect for Trish, who I've known for over 30 years, and Sue Shalou from Cooking Company is as good as you get, as far as a consultant. And we get along, and we're friends. And what I, I have the responsibility of trying to stop the bleeding. And after, after we get hit pretty hard, two tremendously horrendous years, and I will say that I think that, in hindsight, I'll take some of the blame for not, for not trying to increase the rates bit prior. But what we had happen is the claims in the last two years brought the trust fund down substantially, from in the $30 million down to, right now, it's about 14. So it's right hovering around the 10 percent mark. We've also got $7.9 million that legally have to be set aside to take care of incurred but unreported. That's if the situation leaves, we have to pay the run out of the CLO. But what I did, I was directed to do by the Steering Committee, and it's a good Steering Committee. I think the Steering Committee should and will have some changes to it. I've advocated that, and I've talked to Trish and to Nancy about that. But nonetheless, for fiduciary responsibility, they did what they had to do for you. They're not pulling any punches, that's it. And I don't, I don't have an argument with that. What has happened in Mayflower is that a year ago this time, the first four months of the year, our deficit in the red was $4,500,000 after four months. We got walloped with some large claims, and increased claims that came in all, in the first part of the year, which is somewhat unusual. And so that, that headed out, and we kept going all year long. So as I looked at it, the, and I don't want to go too on, 23 percent is not a one-year increase. It's from the day we started having zero increases, the carriers still made projections. So I took a look and said, oh, God, where's the projection from here to here? And that is actually now 22 percent. But I didn't want to go to 22. And based on what I looked at, some of the large claims had dropped off. We made a couple of changes in the insurance policy. And I decided that the 15 percent is, as drastic as it was, was the number. And so for the first four months of this year, and again, it's quarter of the way through, but we're running at a $2 million positive in the black. So we'd switched from 43 to 2 million plus. And that's primarily because of the 15 percent. I'm waiting for one more month, and I'll have that in next week. The carriers have agreed that they would reevaluate our rates in another week. The rates that they gave us had extra trend in it. In fact, I'm surprised they weren't higher. They committed 11.1 percent for Blue Cross Bush Shield, and 12.4 percent for Harvard Pilgrim. Blue Cross is 82 percent of the group, so as boos go, we go. But what's happened is, I was, I was charged with coming up with some ideas to save some money, yet maintain the benefits. And so what I did, and I've, I've shared it with Nancy and Trish, and I haven't shared it with many people, but Mayflower tomorrow will be a date. I don't know if I'll go, maybe Trish will. We're recommending eliminating some plans. The plans that we're recommending are the plans that have been dragging us down. They're plans that are outdated. We call them legacy plans. Blues have them, and so does Harvard Pilgrim. And so I'm recommending dropping those legacy plans. And I'm not sure it's going to pass, because I've got a lot of people that, a lot smaller than these groups are, that have people in their legacies. But we'll find out tomorrow. My rationale was, number one, is that over the last four years, we have run, just off of the claims experience, without the other things that come into it, we have run over four years, $20 million in the red. Of the $20 million, $17 million are from this group of plans that I want to throw out. And that will make a difference. And if they say no, then I'm going to recommend that that group gets a significant rate increase. It's long overdue. Somebody mentioned it to me in 2012, I forget who it was. But it's got to happen now. And, you know, I know, and I know there was going to be upheaval, and there were going to be people that were really upset, and some people have looked and are leaving. And, you know, that's how it goes. I, I don't have, I don't have an argument with them. Probably be doing the same if I was sitting over there, but I'm not. And I just want to tell you that the Mayflower group, I think, has righted the ship. I still have eight more months to come. Next week, I'll have the fifth month in. I think that'll be a pretty good, we're running, instead of, we were, we committed 15 percent for the first four months, we're running at 12 percent. I'll see what happens in the next month, go back to the carriers, get them to re-rate, and everybody's after me to say, well, what do you think your rate's going to be? Well, there's so many variables in this thing, is who's going to stay, who's going to go, what's going to happen, that I have, I've taken a position that needs, I need to have a little bit more room, because I can't hang my hat on either. I'm expecting that the Rate Saver and the Benchmark Plan, two new plans, the only plans that this group bargained for, and the rest of the group, 16, 17, we have 37 units, so most of them didn't pay attention to it, and they're still in that bad group. So we're going to take that, and then we'll apply some of the discounts off of the carriers' rates. And I think I've got a Rate Saver rate that will be in the vicinity of 9 percent, 9, maybe 10. And the Benchmark rates, based on what I'm looking at, I got to move this to this to this. I got to make sure, see if this is going to move, and if it doesn't, then I got to go up here. But it's what it's about. And I think the Benchmark rates would be down in the area of maybe 6 to 7 percent increase. I don't want to say what I'm going to move the legacy rates to. But the carrier, Blue Cross recommended on a, not on a composite basis, but they're rating each of the plans, that that rates go up 23 percent. I've got that, and I don't know if I dare go that high, but I'm going to make a big change. There's going to be changes coming after tomorrow, no matter what happens, and it's going to be for the good. And as I said, the concerns that, that these people have brought up, I don't disagree with them. We still have, well, we won't have Hingham anymore. Rockland, I know, I would bet they're going to go, but they're still, they're still talking. So in any event, the, we have, we had 11,000 subscribers and 2,300 members, that's families. And now, now that's down, just with Hingham going, Hingham's 1,100. So that's down. But it's still a good-sized group. And I respect whatever you decide to do. It won't have any impact on our relationships. If I had one final statement, was I wish it stayed one more year. Then if it hasn't turned around like I think it's going to, then get out. But I respect the position, because Trish has been talking about this for years. And that's what I have to say. I'm just, I didn't come here with any numbers and books, notebooks with all the figures in it. I don't do that. My job is to have a great handle on what the claims are going, how it's working. And I'm really pleased that our first four months have come in even below what we raised. So that's my story, and I appreciate coming in, and just meeting you. I know you're a good boy, and I know you've got great staff, and you've got a good consultant here, too. So I don't have much else to add.
So I, again, we've been very transparent with everything that we've done with the employees, so that's why I wanted Jack to have an opportunity to speak of what he thought. I would remind the board that this is a little day late and a dollar short on the part of Mayflower. As soon as those larger communities bargained to pay higher deductibles under the Rate Saver Benchmark Plan, and Mayflower kept the legacy, we were subsidizing them. And now, suddenly, the Steering Committee has proposed, because of the financial condition, that the legacy plans get eliminated. The likelihood of that is very low, because there are 26?
76 percent of the group.
76 percent of the group is on legacy. And they would have to not only have their selectmen vote to accept this change, that the Mayflower General Board, you're asking the voting people to change and eliminate their own health insurance plan. And also, you're asking them to, to vote that, and it has to be bargained with all the unions and all those communities. So we could have been having this conversation four years ago, and we wouldn't be having the conversation we're having this evening. But I just want to leave you with one more thing, is that this isn't about claims experience, and whether or not Mayflower's having good claims experience or bad claims experience. One member of the IAC has continually said, why don't we wait, why don't we wait, why don't we wait? We still don't know what the rates are, because there's the rates, then there's no plan to build up the reserve again. And we don't know if they vote to change the rates mid-year, if they go south. So we still don't know any of that. But we do know that we were the third largest group until Hingham dropped out on Monday. And we have one vote in the General Board of all of those members. And there is a member that has one member, that has the exact same weight and power as the town of Situate. And so if I leave you with one last thought, is that our $5 million from Situate tax dollars, and another $5 million from your employees' tax dollars, and your retirees, can be better managed, better provided, and better transparency for our employees. So that's why I ask you to vote to withdraw tonight.
I'm going to start with the board first, and then I'll go to the audience. Okay? Anybody, any comments or questions?
I just want to thank Jack for coming, because actually, I think you presented a lot more transparency and clarity to the situation that we're facing. Because I know we all take it very seriously, the impact that it has on, on all of our employees here. And, and actually, your compliments to the staff and the analysis, and the objectivity at which they've approached all this is much welcomed. And I thank you for that. So you helped me actually feel more comfortable in my decision of where I want to go with this, which is, it sounds too like we don't get a lot of opportunities to join MIAA either. So I would be concerned if we missed that opportunity, if we waited another year.
Do you have any questions?
Not really, no. I think, no.
It's been pretty well presented, so.
The only thing, my concern is, Trish, is, you know, we're kind of taking, you know, kind of like a mutual fund effect, and going towards a more specialized risk pool. You know, if our claims go up, our rates are going to go up higher than they may have in a, in a bigger, you know, bigger pond. I do like the fact that there's kind of a, you know, ceiling on that, in terms of any large claims. And it is a bigger entity, just in total. Would you say it's four times larger?
Seven.
Seven times larger than? Now, what has their historical rate increase been? Has it been like that 10 percent?
It's been, when fiscal '13, the average was 5.4. '14 was 6.2. Fiscal '15 was 5.4. And then, like everyone else, they had bad claims experience in '16 and '17. '16 was 9, and '17 was 8.9. But in three of those years, the lowest increase that somebody could get was a zero. So if you had really positive claims experience, you still could benefit.
And comparable, Mayflower, for those years, they were giving us zeros. And Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was between 3 and 5 percent, right? If it had been passed on from the carriers?
Yes.
Yeah.
So are 11 percent increases just from, because we're starting at the point that we are now?
It was based on our claims utilization data review. They got all our claims and gave us a quote. So for us, it was 11.9. For other communities, it was 25 percent.
For Mayflower?
For Maya.
Okay.
Yes, for other communities.
For other communities. So like I said, a lot of communities are looking to leave, but their claims experience and the quotes they've received from other carriers make even a 13 or 14 percent increase from Mayflower. So again, it's, we're trying to focus, the claims are important, but there's much more to the piece of the puzzle there, in terms of why we're having this discussion.
Now, does Maya not offer Harvard? Is that why we're, or do they offer different plans?
Correct. They only offer Blue Cross.
So that's the smallest plan that we offer, so there's a?
We have about 47 people on it, out of 800-plus subscribers.
Sean, you have a question?
Yeah, it's much like the insurance I have for my business. So communities are awarded or penalized based on their claims. If I want to change my insurance base, you know, on my business, the first thing I do is ask for my loss runs. This is similar, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I thought you said that, I just wanted to hear it again.
Yes, sir.
Mary Shay, Northwood Road, and a member of the Firefighters Union. I had a couple of comments. I was part of the IAC for the Firefighters Union, and the vote we took to recommend leaving Mayflower was based on 10.4 percent from Maya, and an estimate from Cooking Company of 14 percent. It seems like that's borderline inaccurate number. And if I understand the numbers correctly, leaving Mayflower, there's nothing to be saved.
I don't think either of those numbers are accurate. Are they, Nancy?
No.
No.
I think they just said it's 11 percent. I think they just said it's eleven percent increase compared to...
The numbers we were given as an IAC was the Maya bid was ten point four percent increase, and the estimated increase for Mayflower would be fourteen percent. As the consultants told you tonight, his estimate's now down to nine percent.
So Barry, just, those, so the IAC was not presented with any fourteen percent numbers. That's the projection that cooking companies presented to the Public Employee Committee. The fourteen percent was never discussed at the IAC, 'cause we simply didn't have it. But Sue, maybe you can help.
Yeah, I think, as part of the process, we did have to meet with the Insurance Advisory Committee and give them the proposal that was being presented to the Public Employee Committee.
On the last meeting, right.
Right, the very last meeting.
The last meeting.
It's part of the regulations. We have to estimate what the potential savings are in the first twelve months of the year. Because we did not know, and we still do not know, what the General Board of the Mayflower Group is going to vote, we had to do some kind of projection. So I basically took the claims experience from Mayflower. I estimated a fourteen percent increase. As a matter of fact, some of the other communities used other consultants, and we were all within a few points of each other, but I think we were very clear that it was strictly a projection, because we certainly don't set those Mayflower rates.
And the nine percent that I think you mentioned is based on the acceptance of changes that haven't even been...
Doing some shuffling around of some things. If that happens exactly that way, he's not a hundred percent sure that's gonna happen.
But my point of the first matter was, when you're given two numbers, and, you know, one's significantly higher, I think that's one of the recommendations.
I think you're skewing the information a little bit. I mean, they gave a projection of eighteen, and right now, excuse me, fourteen, and now it's thirteen, and I don't know what you said about the other group, but it's eleven, what'd you say, it was ten?
It was, oh, it was eleven and nine.
Yeah, so, but, but I mean, it's not like it's fifty and three, I mean, they're pretty close.
Barry, let me just say something. Okay, this is more from a layman's point of view, so from point A to point, let's say F, there were no, maybe no increases or small increases in Mayflower. So what they basically did was they used a lot of the surplus up, right? So they basically took it off of the top. So, the rate, anybody can throw a rate at you, and I'm not gonna say it's a bait and switch, but someone throws a really great rate at you, and that basically, what's happening at that point is, what is the real rate? Like Jack was saying, to do this with the legacy plans and all these things, he could probably bring the rate that we have down, the way I understand it, but what's the real rate? How long's it gonna take us to find that out? And I'm not concerned about the rates so much, what I'm concerned about is where do we sit as far as the deficit goes, maybe a year or two years from now? And then you, and all of the town employees, own the deficit, and that's the biggest issue that scares me. So, I don't know if that clears that up at all. So in other words, you can throw a rate out, and it's probably within a point. Personally, I would feel safer with being out of Mayflower at the way that it's been, you know, coming together for the last few years. But, that's my piece, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just a comment to Barry's observations and to Jack's comment as well. We mentioned that the legacy plans are in seventy-six percent of the members, so Jack had also mentioned that in putting in a rate increase for those legacy plans, should they not be voted out? The General Board votes the rate increase. So if you didn't vote to eliminate your own plan, you're certainly not gonna vote for twenty-three percent increase on your own plan. You're gonna say no.
Right, and like you said, it's only a single vote per entity, no matter how big of a group you have.
So, in regards to Trish's point, and this has been an issue that I've had with Mayflower as well for years, 'cause I've been involved with this group for many, many years, is that the time for change was when municipal healthcare reform was first rolled out, in those first two years, when there was a stick over everyone's head from the state as to what would happen if you did not move along with municipal healthcare reform. There is no stick anymore. There is no impetus for people to make change, other than saving for their employees and for their taxpayers. And if they have not done it to date, what's the impetus to do it? So that's really my concern, and I really do not think that, I would be very surprised tomorrow if there was a vote to eliminate those legacy plans, only because if they hadn't done it to this point, why are they gonna vote to do it now, and then bring down on themselves the bargaining requirement and everything else?
Anybody else have anything?
No, all set, buddy.
Okay, you wanna...
Motion?
Motion, please.
Contingent on...
Reaching agreement with the Public Employee Committee.
Can I just say, it's not in here, is it?
It is in there, yeah, it's written perfectly, yeah.
Yeah, you got it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And we expect to have that agreement at your next meeting.
Move to recommend that the town of Situate withdraw from the Mayflower Municipal Healthcare Group effective July first, two thousand seventeen, contingent upon reaching an agreement with the Public Employee Committee.
Second.
Second, Ms. Curran, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Four to zero.
Four to zero. Four to zero, right, yeah, that's a good point.
With, yeah.
Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you, all your work, it's a lot of work.
Thank you, Jack. Sure.
Les, you can come up.
The next we have an update from the library trustees.
I'll just, I'll just...
Les and Ginny, and...
It's actually library trustees.
I was just gonna say, it's your library.
There was a little mistake.
It's my fault.
Oh, see, they're getting me in trouble. It says trustees right here.
I know.
It does.
Well, putting you on the spot, of course, putting you on the spot.
Are we giving them new jobs?
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I wanna thank you for your, giving us the time to give you an update. I think we've got some interesting things. Ginny, of course, is our vice president. I wanna introduce Don Nelson, who's a member of our fundraising committee, and has been very active with us. I have three things I wanna do tonight. I wanna give you an update on what we call our Memorandums of Agreement, which are agreements with the lodge donors, an update on the project, and we have two requests. But first, I think we oughta have a little holiday cheer, and...
Get the egg on, did you bring the egg on? Might've got a little gift for ya.
We have a check written up to the town of Situate for one hundred thousand dollars.
Wow.
Good.
Awesome.
It's our third check. We'll go over the numbers in a few minutes, but we have given you five hundred thousand before. Late April, we gave you another hundred thousand, and then this one hundred thousand brings us up to seven hundred thousand dollars.
That's great.
That's great.
That's huge.
Good, thank you. And I think we'll have more visits in the future. Let me talk to you a little bit about the memorandum of agreements. Every donor who's given us over twenty-five hundred dollars has agreed, or will be assigning a memorandum of agreement. They have the rights to name an asset of the new library based on those gifts. We have over thirty-one people who fall into that category now, and we've got five of them to present to you tonight. Let me give you just the process quickly. We draw up the agreement, we have the donor sign the agreement, the foundation signs the agreement, we bring it to the Board of Trustees, they sign the agreement, then we'll bring it to you for the final signature. When, after you sign it, you'll bring, you'll give it back to us, we will make copies, the trustees will keep a copy, we'll keep a copy, we'll get a copy back to the donor, okay? The important thing, it lays out two important things, the payment expectations, as well as the, what they want, what asset they wanna name, and anything they wanna say about it, you know, in memory of my mother, or whatever they wanna say about it. So I've got five of them today, and we're gonna give them to you, and you don't need to pay attention to them tonight, but just sign them at some point. They are from Ginny Az, myself, John Kalopolis, and his wife, Karen Canfield, and Mark and Michelle Dickinson. And we've got several others that are working for us, so if you would just give them to her, I'd appreciate it. So...
Thank you.
If you can get, just get those back to us at some point, I would think that we'll probably give you five or six at every meeting for the foreseeable future, until we get that wrapped up.
Good, great, that's great.
Okay?
That's great, thank you.
So that's the idea. Good. Great things are happening. The month of November, we had cash coming in of over seventy thousand dollars. Was our best month total. I'll give you some numbers that are happening. We've had some building tours that have been very successful. We've had two tours, we had one person who had given us five thousand dollars, we took them through the building, they raised their gift to twenty-five thousand.
Nice.
We had another person who had given us forty-six thousand, we took them through the building, they raised the gift to a hundred thousand.
Do you think we'll take him a second time, maybe?
We're gonna take him again. Don, I'm gonna bring you in sometime. So we'll talk more a little about that in a moment. Lots of people, I noticed in the room, have given to Thousand Homes program. That program is going very well. We've had some banners around town, we've got some lawn signs around town. You've got a flyer that we've just distributed, that will be mailed to every single person in Situate. I was hoping it would be out today, but it's probably tomorrow, it might be Thursday, but it's gonna be in the next few days, and so that's, that'll be to everybody, so that's happening.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's very well done. We've had some wonderful people working on the design of that and the work on putting it together. I have to tell you that I'm very pleased with the effort of the Citrat Library Foundation members. We've got fourteen members, and everybody has worked extremely hard. You pick up the phone and ask them a question, and they're on it, and they're doing the work right away, and there's a lot of work. In fact, Gary Fernquist was here, he had to go back because he's got a whole bunch of new deposits he needs to make and enter into the system. But even more than just the work, every single one of those fourteen members have given us at least a thousand dollars, and the combined fourteen members have given us over a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that's from the foundation itself, so we're very pleased with that. Let me talk to you just a little bit about some of the large gifts. You probably read in the Mariner that the Citrat Historic Society gave us fifty thousand dollars to name the history room, and it'll probably be called the President's History Room in honor of the four presidents of the Historic Society. They're raising that money from their own members. They've already given us fifteen thousand, we just got a check last week, and they're gonna give us another fifteen, I believe, before the end of February, and then the rest by the end of the next year. So, we've got a schedule on that, I don't remember the exact thing. The hundred thousand dollar gift has come to us from the Hamilton Charitable Foundation, which is the charitable foundation of Harold and Maura Brown. And if you don't know Harold and Maura Brown, Harold actually is ninety-five years old, he is the oldest living moss-er. He's been here, he's summited here his entire life, and he's mossed here forever. And so they've given us a hundred thousand dollars. The likely name of the room will be the Judge Nolan Community Room, because her father was Judge Nolan, lived up on Hathley Road for many, many years.
Very reputable, really well-known judge, and a very good man.
Yeah.
I know, so.
Yeah.
I was gonna say Maura, and I will say this, for those people who look at Front Street and say, "What could've been?", Harold and Maura, I think, was more the inspiration for buying the Welsh Company, preserving it, and putting the money into it, otherwise it would've been torn down.
That's right.
So, they've done a lot, that's phenomenal, so, that's excellent.
So we're very pleased with that. We also are very pleased, we're finalizing the final agreement, but it looks like Joy von Adesine's family, Gigi Marachi and her daughter, Cindya Norton, have raised enough money to name the children's program room for Joy. That was a twenty-five thousand dollar naming opportunity, they've got about twenty-three already, so that's certainly enough, and I'm sure they'll get the other two before the time limit is there. So, we're very pleased to know that. You also have in front of you a sheet, which is our donor board, and we're very, very excited about what that's gonna look like. And when the new library opens, that will be just on the other side of the reference, the circulation desk, it will list every donor over a thousand dollars, and that lighthouse actually lights up. And we looked at multiple different donor boards, and that one came in, and we just went, "Ah, this is it." And it's a beautiful design, and we're very, very happy with that. We're, at the moment, we have about two-hundred-and-twenty-five names that'll be on it. We're hoping that by the end of December, when we have to give them the final list, there'll be more. It's done with acetate, so for a few hundred dollars, three or four hundred, I can't remember the exact number, we can update that list, and so we anticipate that we'll update it every three months for the first year or so, and then maybe six months after that, or something of that order. So we're working on that. We mentioned this out, Thousand Homes and so forth, we've had over twenty businesses give us donations, from a thousand dollars to over ten thousand, and a couple people have given us gifts in kind, and so we're very happy with that. We've got about six-hundred-and-fifty families in town that have given us gifts. We've had two recent tragedies in town, deaths that people have asked money be given to the foundation. Dr. Tom Berry passed away about three weeks ago, and then Michael Goulding just recently passed away, and we've been the beneficiary of large amount of money from those two. We're still tallying the numbers and trying to give back appropriate thank yous to the people that have made contributions, but one contribution was twenty-five hundred dollars. So it's more than sending fifty dollars, because you would've spent that on flowers. Some people are doing some excellent things, and some kids who are a friend of his, I say kids, probably twenty-three, twenty-four, but they raised together eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So, there's a number of those gifts that are coming in. I think that's the, oh, the numbers. You also have in front of you some numbers, and if you look at these numbers, this is very close to the format I gave you in April. The donations right now, as of December second, is almost twelve-and-a-half million dollars. I'm sorry, boy.
Move the desk.
You're trying to get him not to exaggerate.
We're gonna pay for the schools, too, all right? One point two-five million, almost that. This is, this is a huge moving target right now, because, you know, we were getting three gifts a week, whatever, we're getting eight and ten gifts a day now, so it's really coming, and I think the fact that people can see the building...
Well, that's what you always said, Les, was you could see the building.
I did, yeah, and they are. They're really, they're really doing a good job. So, you'll notice that cash received to date is eight-hundred-and-three. Those numbers, the twelve, four-oh, and the four-three-six, and eight-oh-three, I bet my life on them, but the other numbers, they're probably off by maybe twenty percent, so they're kinda eyeballed, and I had to figure them out a little bit. So we do expect maybe another thirty-five thousand by the end of the year of pledges, and we expect maybe another two-twenty by the end of next year, and so forth. And so everybody, you know, people give us a pledge, and quite honestly, I'm not gonna say no, if they wanna give us some money, if you wanna stretch it out three years or whatever, fine. So that's the numbers we've got. We have a couple of requests. You know that we've always had a gala, and it's always been over at the Barker Tavern. We'd like to have a gala this year on April eighth at the new library, and because it is a public building, we'd like to ask your permission to give us authority to do that. We anticipate asking some, most everybody who's made a major gift to come, we expect to charge a pretty penny, like we've had at the Barker, and we expect not to have a big author like we've had before, but we have a request out to Charlie Baker to come. So, we'd like to ask your permission to do that. Sure.
Let us think about it.
So, yeah, the building's not gonna be ready for a public function of that size April first. I mean, I certainly think you should be able to have the gala there, but maybe postpone it, but we're not even moving into that building till March, and that's assuming everything's done on time.
April eighth is the...
I understand that, but there'll be punch list items, and it's also happening at the exact same time as the new public safety building, so, I mean, Les, I think absolutely the gala should be held there, it's just the date.
Okay.
And I think April eighth, you know, is just too soon, because it doesn't leave us any leeway.
What about a month later? Is that possible? Have you set that...
Well, we haven't, we really hadn't looked at that, because we assumed that it was gonna be all done by about the middle of March, and so that's the date we use.
It will be done, but there's punch list items, and again, we're coordinating with the public safety building, and also transitioning out of the Harbor community, so I think it would be, the date is just, I mean, if you could do it a month, that would be perfect.
All right.
We can certainly look at it. We thought we had more of a cushion, we thought they were moving in earlier, we thought we had more of a cushion, and we were just trying to get past the holidays and the ski season, and before all the first greenings in the spring, and then... and the ski season, and before all the first greenings in the spring, and then.
All of that.
Is it your intention to have it, you know, ready to go? Or would you rather have this event before you have it stocked and so forth?
Ironically, we actually talked initially about doing a sneak peek, you know, and what if we had a gala, and part of the draw of the gala would be that it wasn't even open yet. But the hard part of that is, in order to stay at the level of that size, you have to commit to catering and food, and we don't have to.
And occupancy, too.
And so committing to that, you have to do ahead of time, but then you don't necessarily know when you're gonna get your occupancy permit. So then there was a question of, you know, can we commit? So say we said, we're gonna do a sneak peek on, you know, March 30th, and the library wouldn't technically be open, but we're gonna go have this gala, and then we'll open that one. We have to bank on the fact that there's gonna be a certificate of occupancy in place.
It's not the certificate of occupancy. It's when the contractor officially releases the building to the town, that then becomes responsible as the owner and the operator. And then the insurance company has to go in and insure all the new contents and personal property of a $12 million building, which they don't have, all of which is brand-new. So that has to take, and the certificate of insurance has to be in place, and then we become liable for anything that happens in that building to the individual. So we're increasing the value and the square footage and the collection, and it's all brand-new, and that all has to have new underwriting by our insurance company and new contents insured. And then, so, and that will happen quickly, once we get that occupancy permit, and the insurance folks can actually come in. But that would be, you know, very difficult to have a pre-opening before that for insurance purposes.
Would it be appropriate to look at late in April? Or would you rather us move to the first part of May?
I can't say. I mean, I would like to do it as soon as you can. It's just, right now, the building's 70% done. It depends on the substantial completion, we'll know for sure. And then it's sort of that, when it turns over to us, and we're sort of master of our domain, and it depends on how long the contractor punch list is, too.
Okay.
What's the, sorry, what's the, what's the long time between when you get the building, and then all of that insurance and punch list and all that, and then the library has to move in, and it gets opened? Like, what's that?
Right, so the, I'm not, the insurance piece won't be too much, I don't think. It's the contract punch list, whether it's two pages long or 20 pages long. That's the piece we won't know until she moves in, actually, and says, this plug doesn't work, these toilets don't work, these lighting conduits are, you know, sparking or stuff like that. That's the contractor punch list.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you get, you can't get insurance before that's all done?
We, it's when we get possession. Right. So it's, so right now, that building's totally insured by the contractor.
His building.
So I'm just trying to figure out, by the time you get the building, the building gets handed over to Situate, that would be like a six week or some, four week, like that, is that enough time? If we wait, I'm trying to figure, when's the time, when do you anticipate we would actually know when?
Well, I think, I think they're saying that if we do it the first week of April, I mean, May, that probably gives them plenty of time to do it.
I would say, if, you know, you're scheduled for the first week of May, and we're having problems, then we got bigger problems than having to worry about your gala. And I'm not anticipating that at all.
Right.
It's just, we're trying to make sure, and again, we have limited staff to do the public safety building at the same time. So that's the other thing. So when something happens and Jesse calls Kevin Kelly, he might be at public safety or something. So I'm just sort of trying to manage expectations around.
One of our issues, of course, is we do have a formal request to Charlie Baker right now for April 8th, so we'll have to change that. So we'll have to get a date in May, and we'll come back to you with that date as soon as possible.
I think, Les, what you're hearing is, we support.
Yeah, I do.
Absolute.
I do. Yeah.
You're gonna take a lot of risk.
Yeah.
Like, if we say you can do it April 8th.
You may be in the parking lot.
You're taking a lot of risk that you may not be able to do it.
Which you might not wanna be able to say.
So.
It's a snowstorm, too, so you know.
Well, in April? Oh, yeah, yeah. Don't say that. Okay, well, thank you. We'll take that under advisement. We'll come back with that. The other issue is, I noticed that you have on your agenda that Riva has asked to support our wine tasting event, and I hope you approve that. That's for Thursday night. We're a little late in getting this done, but we're having a very special event at the Silas Pierce House, and we anticipate a large crowd. We had a similar event in the summer, and we made $20,000. So we're hoping to make or exceed that kind of money at that event.
Is that a library foundation?
It is a foundation, yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Trustees and I allowed to fund.
Yeah, the trustees can't fundraise.
Exactly.
I think that's it, unless anybody else wants to say anything.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
No, I'd just like to make a comment. I mean, you said you were gonna raise money. You've raised money. You've raised more money than, I think I've said this before, than any other entity has ever come to the town and given it to. And, you know, I'm impressed. I think you're doing a great job, and you're continuing to do it. Most people come, and they put effort in for a month, and they give us what they can, and you guys have done this for years, and are gonna continue to do it for years. So it's a, it's a really impressive effort that you guys are putting in there, and you should be proud of yourselves. And I know we're all proud of the fact that you guys are going through it, so thank you.
Well, I did say something to Don at one of our fundraising committee meetings the other day about the end of the fundraising committee, and he said, it doesn't end, we're just gonna keep doing this. And actually, we're thinking about continuing an annual campaign, so that we'll continually raise money for the foundation, that we can then support the library in other ways over time. I should also point out, one other thing that we didn't mention is, we did have a change program that we called a Change for Changing Library with the schools, and we raised $2,200. And that was in the middle of November. We had hoped to get a little more, but the surprising thing is that the kids didn't bring the message home to the parents as much as we had hoped. But we did get $2,200, so we're pretty happy with that.
That's great.
Good.
And you can thank the fact that Les is retired and making this a full-time job. Not many of us can do that.
Other people say, wait a minute, Les, I got a job to do.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Les. Thank you, Don. Thank you, Jan.
Moving on to old business. We have a discussion vote as adoption of the new special one-day license selectance policy. Lorraine Devon.
So, in front of you in the packet was the, there have been no changes since the last meeting. So I'd ask you to take a look at the policy, see if you have any changes or requests for changes, or, and I'd like to vote on it, if possible, so that we can implement it for January 1st.
So, there were three things that I sent you yesterday or whatever on that, and I just wanted to bring those up for discussion. You may have to help me with them. One of them was the fact that non, or not nonprofit events can only have wine and malt, where nonprofits can have an open.
Can have an all alcohol.
Open bar, whatever it is. Not open.
Conserve all alcohol.
Right.
That's a state ABCC regulation.
So that's a state law that they can only do that? That seems strange to me.
Yeah.
It's on the ABCC regulations and guidelines.
It's not the first strange law I've seen, so.
Okay. And I think the other one was.
It doesn't mean that you have to agree to allow anyone in Situate.
We can't go beyond the law, though. We have to stay.
Right.
So we could not make that an all-inclusive license for not nonprofits?
Not that I'm aware of. You'd have to check with legal counsel to see if that would be allowed. I mean, I can't use that.
The other question, well, almost, you changed, no, no, that was in the other. What was the other? Other question I have was that you had to stop serving at 10:30?
Correct. And the reason why I left, I put it in as 10:30 is because our other policies that we are, already have in place, that have already been voted in, allow serving till 10:30. For example, in the Citro Maritime Center Agreement, we have a four-hour pouring allowed in up to 10:30. But you could leave it one way that way, and, you know, change the time for other.
So if somebody has an event at St. Mary's, and it goes till midnight, they would have to stop serving at 10:30 per this policy?
Correct, yes.
So I think, what time do we usually let events go to?
Sometimes we're done at 11:00, I thought.
11:00 is probably the most, though, I don't think. I mean, I've gone to a lot of St. Mary's. They haven't really stretched out too much past that.
I would say.
Well, what about weddings? Usually, you know, I guess the thought is this, once this gets put in place, then that's it. So we have to think of all the potential solutions.
Well, this is different than, you know, Barker Tavern has a liquor license that allows them to serve liquor to whatever time.
Right, this is a one-day license.
This is just a one-day license.
So I would think we would extend it at least until 11:00, unless anyone, I don't know.
I thought it was for multiple, though. So let's say the yacht club comes in, and they say they have four events or five events, and they're gonna serve alcohol.
They have their own, doesn't the yacht club have their own liquor license?
No, they come in.
They have their own typically, which.
They have to come in, although they bring their own, I think. But I mean, the different organizations that may.
I'm pretty sure the Citro Harbor Yacht Club has an indoor liquor license.
They come for entertainment license, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. You'll be approving it tonight in your packet.
So like, if somebody wanted to have a reception at the Maritime Center, they would only be able to go until 10:30?
It's been the policy for the past five years, that they can serve till 11, till 10:30.
And that was an agreement. We were reminded that the board promised the residents of the area when we started having functions there.
For the Maritime Center.
Yeah.
Well, on the flip side of it, you know, we look at it, we don't wanna condone, you know, if it's these events, they can shut it off at 10:30. And you know what? The parties can continue, but no more alcohol. And, you know, given our past history, probably it's a good thing to do that. Let's set the precedent. I have no issues with it.
I would say extend it to 11:00. You three decide.
I think we should be consistent, 'cause then it just causes more confusion if we're 10:30 on one license and 11:00 on another. Well, you, we would have to do a separate vote to change, if you wanted to. It would certainly be a prerogative to change the Maritime Center to 11:00, but as Tricia said, he had that agreement with the residents.
So, I mean, when we're talking pouring till 10:30, does that mean drinks are done by 11:00 typically, or that they, that's it? That's it?
Pouring.
No more pouring at 10:30.
I think the policy says 15 minutes.
That's a big compromise, 10:40. 10:30, no, I'm just saying.
Stop serving at 10:30, and you can have a drink until.
By quarter of 11:00. I think 10:30 is, I mean, that's just me, and I think 10:30 is fine.
You got it.
Well, let's see where the vote goes. What do you think?
What do we do when people ask for, not necessarily one-day license, but they ask to have a wedding in their yard? We've gone to 11 o'clock on that.
With their own private home, right.
Yeah, that doesn't fall under this.
No, I know that, but I'm just, no.
It falls under something different, right?
Right, I know, but I mean, just, just, all right. Yeah, these are held at a.
This is, if you were having a function at your home, and you were charging, say a fundraiser, and you were charging people to come, you would require a one-day wine and malt.
Yeah, but.
And a one-day license for alcohol, and you would need to stop at 10:30.
Okay. But most times, it's a wedding or something like that.
I don't see the yacht club on there, so I'm just.
Now, the yacht club is bring your own, but I was thinking like, I was thinking of their music, they come in for it, so.
I don't see the license for anyone.
They're not, they don't have an alcohol, they don't have a bar.
Off to a.
They don't. It's BYOB.
Are we good? Kind of motion, or?
What was the third thing? I can't remember the third thing. Oh, just the wording of that one sentence where it looked like the exception.
I think it was just the two things that I recall.
That's, I think it's the second paragraph on page two.
Hold on.
Where it talked about the exceptions, and it said the gar hall right after it.
I think it was implementation procedure? Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. That was right here, venues outside of private residence, page one, number two.
Right, gar hall reads like there are exceptions hours only to 10:30 was your email.
Yeah, it just kind of read weird, where, but if you guys understand it, then.
Remind me again, you know, just who exactly, give me an example of who would come in and be required to get this.
Okay.
I mean, I've read just one example, just don't, I mean, I've read every single definition, and I'm just sort of thinking about Tony's comment about 11:00.
Sure. Well, let's talk about the example of tonight. The Library Foundation is having a fundraiser at the Silas Homestead. They're charging an admission fee.
Yep.
And they're selling alcohol. And the Silas Homestead does not have a liquor license in the town of Situate. So because the Silas Homestead does not have a liquor license, and because they are charging to attend this fundraiser, it requires a special one-day license.
On top of the one that the caterer gets? So if the caterer's coming in and doing?
No, this is the caterer that's getting the license. Riva is the caterer for the Library Foundation fundraiser.
Okay.
Because it has to be a TIP certified.
Right.
And they have to have insurance, liquor liability insurance. So it's an approved caterer on our list.
Any privately owned, you don't have to worry about it, but anything that you open to the public, and alcohol is going to be served, you're gonna now have to have somebody who's TIP certified. You have to hire somebody to be a bartender. So that's really what you're dealing with. It's not with the restaurants, it's not with weddings, or, but if you're gonna have any type of fundraising. And I can tell you right now, I know like the various beach associations, that's, now this policy's gonna have to apply to them. So, and I'm trying to think of some other organizations, if anybody's gonna be with alcohol to the public, you know? Otherwise, you have to have a list of people, like an invitation list, which really makes it private. So it just, it regulates it now.
'Cause I also think, you know, with respect to what Tony says, when you read, the last drink must be served before the closing hour, all glasses and bottles must be cleared from the licensed area by 15 minutes after the closing hour, all customers must have left the premises by 30 minutes after the closing hour. That does sort of back into making 10:30 early, right? 'Cause you're backing into 10:30 is considered the closing hour, correct?
Mm-hmm. You can certainly extend those times.
You could say ten thirty and the board may extend the time on an individual basis upon request at its sole discretion.
We could do that, because what I was going to say is, a lot of the, most of the one days that we see, I've never seen anything really go, ask for anything late, you know?
So if you.
Typically nine thirty.
Give yourself the flexibility, if there's something in the, ten thirty isn't hard and fast, the policy lets you have the discretion under.
Can we, we can add that in? We can still do this tonight though, right?
Yes, as amended.
As amended.
Perfect.
Maybe that's a good compromise, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's great. Because you, you may get one or two that may need that, but I don't, I, I think majority are going to be exactly what we see.
But they would come to you in that case and you could ask them questions to ascertain whether or not it could go further.
Right, so when they come up for that one day, that would be a.
Absolutely.
I mean, I would have to check on the four hour period in the state regulations for that. I'm not sure that can be changed. So if you approve them till eleven, it would be seven, eight, nine, ten, seven to eleven.
But we have one here.
As opposed to six to eleven.
We have one here from eleven to six.
Yeah, it's, it's not really eleven to six, though they booked the Maritime Center that long, but it's only a four hour.
Well, you can only have it for four hours.
Mm-hmm. You can only serve alcohol for four hours.
So then.
I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
But we can change that too, right?
No, it's a state regulation.
Oh, four hours of state regulation?
I believe so. I would have to go back and.
That's at the discretion of the board. I mean, the policy's an advisory policy anyway in terms of regulating these licenses to begin with. So I think they, certainly within their purview to be able to do it.
Okay.
Can you think about a wedding? Why don't you put both of those under the discretion of the board on an individual basis?
You could say that the board can extend the hours upon, you know, on an individual case basis, but under no circumstances will it fail to be in compliance with state regulations.
Yep. I think it's already covered in the last sentence, under hours, number nine, page four. I put in, the board of selectmen has the authority to dictate the specific hours and terms of sale and service of alcohol under a special license.
And that's.
And that's fine.
Then we're good.
Yeah, you're good.
Tony, did you hear that?
Yeah, that's good with me.
So.
That's safe.
Number nine, page four, I made the last sentence that you have full authority over everything.
Oh, there you go. So that's a flexibility.
There's your flexibility.
Forgot that was in.
Say that again?
Look on number nine.
Number nine, page four, in the last sentence, I wrote, the board of selectmen has the authority to dictate the specific hours and terms of sale and service of alcohol under a special license, which is what this policy is.
Just adopt it as written.
Okay?
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
So why have anything else? Never mind.
Can I have a motion?
Is that okay?
Anybody want a motion? Are we good? Move that the board of selectmen approve the special one day license operational policy to become effective on January first, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion?
Aye.
Aye. None.
None. All those in favor?
Aye, aye, sorry. I followed Sean's lead.
I didn't even know what he said.
Mr. Chair, I just want to take a moment to thank Lorraine, who worked really long and hard on this policy, recognized that there was a void there that we needed to address, and she did a real great job on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good job.
Probably get rocks thrown at me in town, but.
We won't tell anybody.
We'll just change it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we safeguard the donation from the library and.
Yeah, Marty.
Well, that, that's exactly, I am going to put it in my pocket.
Pam has been waiting patiently.
Is that why Pam's here?
Yeah. That's why Pam came down? Did you see it on TV, Pam?
Want you to suddenly be taking a world trip.
No, I believe it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
All right, next, moving on to new business, we have a discussion vote for some one day wine and malt licenses.
Motion, Susan?
Move to approve a one day wine and malt for Riva Restaurant for a Cituate Town Library fundraiser at the Silas Pierce Homestead on December eighth, twenty sixteen, from six thirty P M. until nine thirty P M.
Second, if you can tell me where it is.
Yes, it is actually on Country Way and it's actually Frank Snow's building that actually was a Victor, it's a colonial that he actually, was kind of made to look like a Victorian, although they put a pool in the back, it was a mess. Tore, tore off all the stuff and he made it a gorgeous colonial. It's, it's one of, I think, three or four that are the Pierce family and you'll see them in the air. Am I correct?
And it's for sale, so you can buy it while you go.
Did I, did I get it right?
You did.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve a one day wine and malt for the Silent Chef for a baby shower to be held at the Cituate Maritime Center on December eleventh, twenty sixteen, from twelve o'clock noon until four o'clock P M.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor?
Good.
Aye.
Aye.
Did we get two in that page? Yeah, I think we did.
Let them move on to a discussion of vote of the board and committee appointments for the animal control.
I'll move to appoint Ron Sessel to the Animal Control Board for a term of three years or until the successor is named.
Second.
Second by Ms. Vignani.
I move. Aye.
Aye.
I move to appoint Lynn Sessel to the Animal, Animal Control Board for a term of three years or until the successor is named.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye. I further move to appoint Nancy Robertson to the Animal Control Board for a term of three years or until the successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we have the discussion vote to open the April twenty sixth, two thousand seventeen annual town meeting warrant.
And special town meeting, right? I'll move that the board of selectmen open the annual and special town meeting, meeting warrant for April twenty sixth, twenty seventeen, town meeting to be held at the opened Performing Arts Center.
Second, if it's ready.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
I'm confident it will.
After we move the librarian, right?
I want to make sure George Kelly can hear everybody speak at the annual town meeting.
That should be doable.
We'd really want that motion.
Yes.
No, I'll.
We have a discussion of vote of the two thousand seventeen board of selectmen meeting schedule.
Who's second in that order tomorrow?
Yes.
The only comment I have on the meeting schedule is that it's during both February and April vacation weeks. I don't know if.
I think we have a hot topic on, if you want. Yeah, I think so. Right here.
Oh, yeah, thanks. So we can look at the February, April, we'll have to see how your budget reviews are going.
That's a week before, I know that.
January through March is hard because of the budget cycle, but we have a little extra time, so we might be able to do February. We can look at that. But April, we have to keep right now. If you get your work done soon, you can work around that one too.
Because of the three weeks in a row in March, I know one meeting I will not be able to make.
Yeah, you always have to have the three in March.
Yeah, so one of them, I think it's the first one I'll have to miss because it's a, a time share and that can't change, you know?
It's really, I mean, if, if you want to double up on some business for those budget stuff, then you can move them around, but it's sort of, unfortunately, the budget cycle dictates that. But we can look at it as it gets closer.
What's vacation, Tony? April eighteenth?
The twenty first.
Twenty first and then the eighteen.
But April eighteenth, when is it? We're having a town meeting, right? After that, right?
Two six.
The twenty sixth.
It's two weeks later than normal this year.
Well, we're not going to be dealing with the, the budget by the eighteenth, are we? Should have that done.
You'll have your reviews done, but capital has to come in and do their recommendations and stuff. Again, we have extra time there, so you might be okay on the eighteenth.
Okay, if you want to look into those two. That's the only thing that.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll, Lorraine, we'll keep that on our radar and.
It stuck out to me.
Not sure I'm going to be here December fifth. Just kidding.
Such jokes.
Do you want to just?
No, it's just the list.
I would vote and just say.
Vote to approve the two thousand seventeen board of selectmen meeting schedule as presented.
With possible changes.
With possible changes.
With possible revisions.
Of February and April vacation.
Addressing February and April.
Unless we choose to change.
Vacations. Yep, that'd be fine.
Second.
Second by Ms. Vignani. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, oh boy. Okay, now we're moving on to discussion and vote of the two thousand seventeen town of Cituate annual license renewal. And there's a, a lot of them.
Motion?
Okay, so we've got a couple of things that we're going to have to do here. Are you going to take them individually, Tony?
I'm going to go through the whole first list.
Yeah, that's what we typically do, the, you know, restaurant, all alcohol.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Take turns.
All right, so we're going to start with renew the following alcohol, all alcohol licenses for two thousand seventeen.
Ready? Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the following restaurant, all alcohol licenses for two thousand seventeen. Riva Restaurant, Cituate Tavern, the Gannick Grill, the River Club, the Mill Wharf, Oro Restaurant, PJ's Country House, the Galley, TK O'Malley's, Widow's Walk, and the Riverside.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the following restaurant, wine and malt license for two thousand and seventeen. Cosmos Cafe.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the following retail package store, all alcohol license for two thousand and seventeen. Harborside Wine and Spirits, Reynolds Package Store, Cituate Package Store, and Stillwater's Wine and Gourmet.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following retail package store, wine and malt licenses for two thousand and seventeen? Sand Hill's General Store, Tedeschi's Food Shops, Malaney's, the Village Market.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following VFW Club, all alcohol license for two thousand seventeen, the Cituate Post number three one six nine?
Second by Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following club, all alcohol license for two thousand seventeen?
Second.
Hathley Country Club.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following club, wine and malt license for two thousand seventeen? Cituate Racket and Fitness.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following common vicular license for two thousand seventeen? China Gourmet, Cersei's Grotto, Coffee, Coffee Corner, D W Enterprise Inc., CP's Wood Fired Pizza, Dad's Place, Dribbles, Trifway Dunkin' Donuts, Egypt Country Store, Harbor Donuts, known as Homemade, Harbor House of Pizza, Hennessy News, In It Cituate Harbor, Sam's on the Harbor, Kayla Restaurant, Lucky Finn, Maria's Suburban Pizza, Mary Lou's News, Morning Glory's Bakery, L C O Taborda Inc., Pete's Mediterranean Fresh, Quench Juicery, excuse me, Quench Juicery. You can do the next one. Ronnie Shum's General Store, Creo, the Science Chef, Fresh, The Fresh Feast, Oceanside Inn, South Shore Cinemas, Wilmer North, Sand Hill's General Store, Cliffside, Riva's Restaurant, also known as J K M Square LLC, Cituate Tavern, Cosmos, the Gannick Grill and Jamie's Pub, the River Club, Nana's Enterprises, Hathley Golf Club, the Mill Wharf, Oro, the Village Market, PJ's Country Store, Reynolds Package Store, Leah Maya Liquors, VFW Cituate Post three one six nine, Cituate Racket and Fitness, the Galley and Green Eyed Lady, TK O'Malley's McCloskey Inc., Tedeschi's Food Shops, Widow's Walk, Riverside, Grateful Haven LLC, and Malaney's.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on the entertainment licenses, I just, we need, we're going to need, we could have to do the Galley last, I need a separate motion for the Galley.
Okay. Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following entertainment licenses for two thousand and seventeen? Riva's Restaurant, PJ's Country Store, the River Club, Hathley Country Club, Cituate Post three one six nine, TK O'Malley's, the Mill Wharf, Riverside, the Gray, Gannick Grill.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we'll go to the Galley.
Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the following entertainment license for two thousand seventeen, Galley.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. Further discussion? So we, we have a, a situation where some, some of the residents behind the Galley have had some, not, not numerous complaints, but there's been a few complaints due to the, the music with the windows being open and they have an indoor entertainment license. So I've actually spoken to, to Brian and we have the young lady here, who was one of the people that, we're going to let her speak in just a second. So what we're trying to just solve the problem, the, the music has been playing with the windows open again closer to the sidewalk and it's, there's been, you know, like I said, there's a couple of complaints to the police department that the, they have, only have an indoor license and it's been basically sort of treated as an outdoor license. So I will go to the audience first. Yes, name and address, please.
Chris Nelson, ninety one Front Street.
Okay.
Yes, as far as those doors being open, they use that as an extension of their business and on Heritage Days and on Sundays, when the weather's good, they open up the doors and they have huge amplifiers. Now, they're only supposed to have one or two guitars and on Heritage Day, they had a band. And there were people lined up on Front Street from Rivas all the way to the Conway Building on both sides of the street. And there were five police officers out there. People were sitting on the sidewalks, they were sitting in our courtyard, caused all sorts, sorts of havoc. I have pictures here that I'll let you, and on Sunday, I couldn't take it anymore. So.
Pass Sunday?
Sunday of Heritage Days?
No, this, yeah.
So.
Heritage Days.
But as far as, I mean Heritage Days, was it?
And then on Sunday, they have someone in there playing a guitar with amplifiers. And Heritage Days, I was in my unit, which is really on the third floor, and I could hear them like they were right there. I mean, I had no enjoyment in my unit at the time. And I'm just requesting, when they have music, to have those doors closed. That's all.
Have you seen this other than Heritage Days Weekend, anything like this though?
On Sundays, yes.
People, people in the street like this?
Pardon me?
People in the street like this?
Oh, yes, that, this was taken on Sunday.
Of Heritage Days?
Right, 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 right.
But, yeah, but there's not people in the street just on a regular day.
When they're, when they're playing music, you mean?
Yeah.
Sometimes, but usually not. See, they had a band which they weren't supposed to have.
On Heritage Days?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Ed, or Brian and Erica both here, would you like to respond?
Absolutely. We're sorry. Next year, we want to put a band outside of Heritage Days, we'll apply for a, a, a outside permit. That can't see the votes. As far as regular Sundays, we do have one person acoustic person inside. We do like to open the doors so that the people on Front Street do hear the music. But it's during the day, it's between like two and five.
No, no, this, this.
You're talking about Heritage Days. We're, we agree, we agree a hundred percent of this.
He apologized for that.
But that's, that's the only time of the year we do it.
This was at Friday night, they stopped at eleven.
We don't have music generally on Fridays or Saturdays. During the year, other than Heritage Days Weekend, we only carry music on Sundays. It's typically two to five unless there's a Patriots game. If there's a Patriots game, it may go as late as seven, depending on the Patriots game.
Again, the spirit of Heritage Days, like everybody else in Cituate, we like to have a, we like to welcome people and listen to music on Heritage Days Weekend. We have a license that just, means us have music till midnight year round on Friday and Saturday night.
Oh, no, I understand that.
We don't use that because we, we'll just do a Heritage Days, we, once a year. Next year, we will, we will come and we will refer one day permit for Friday or Saturday night.
Through you.
Those doors need to be closed.
Okay, that's, we'll just, I, I don't, we don't want to have this dialogue happen, sorry, but, you know.
You speak to the chair and the chair will go out.
And they can speak to me as well. So, so I guess what we're, what we're asking is, obviously we'll address Heritage Days legally, and they did apologize for this Heritage Days. As far as the music on a normal business within the summertime, the only thing that I think we need to do is, since it isn't an outdoor entertainment, TK's has the same issue, whereas they have a door there and a lot of times it's very hot and they'll open the doors and they do get some complaints from the neighbors and they end up having to close the doors. So my, my only thing I could say to you, if possible, would be to, to move the music either closer to the inside where it's not by the, by the windows or, or something, you know?
They even moved furniture out. They moved tables.
Ma'am, ma'am, just direct everyone to the chair.
They moved tables and chairs, as you can see.
Are you talking about Heritage Days?
Right.
Okay, so we don't, Heritage Days is done. They've agreed that they're going to.
He apologized.
Do it differently for Heritage Days and they're not going to do it the way they did last year. So now just on a regular, just a weekly occurrence is what we're talking about now.
Would be the guitar player that plays on Sunday.
Right, so they have a license to have a guitar player play acoustically.
Correct, correct.
All week if they want to.
Correct.
Right.
But he has the amplifier and I can hear it in my unit.
Are you right, right above him?
I'm in two eleven. There's the ground floor, the lobby, the first and the second.
So you, you live right above the restaurant?
To give you an idea, Tony.
Behind. In the Bellboy condos.
I can tell you, show you something. Yeah, there's right there, there to there.
Oh, okay.
Christine, you're in the Bellboy condos, correct?
Pardon me?
The Bellboy condominiums? You're in the Bellboy condos.
Right where the Bellboy used to be, exactly.
They're, they're actually where, was it the shoe, the shoe store? They're not on the corner of the shoe store, they're on the other side of, of, on Dr. Price's, right on the, it's two oh one, but that's, she's on the corner, you're.
That's her porch, right? Is this her porch? Is this your porch?
No, that's the one below me. That's another gal.
That one up in there?
I'm above that.
So I did, I mean, I checked with the Situate Police and, and the last year, everything's been a lot smoother at the galley. We had some issues a year, you know, two years ago and a lot of that stuff's been smoothed out. So I'm gonna trust that Brian and Erica are gonna make that happen and we'll just take it from there, so.
Okay.
All right?
Christine, have you spoken to Brian or...
No, I don't even know who he is. Hello?
Um, you know, he's, takes a lot of pride in, in his business and everything and, and here he is tonight and, you know, I'd just, it'd be great if you guys could talk. It seems like he, he wants to do the right thing. We've said this to everyone else, other establishments, look, you know, take care of your neighbors or, you know, so...
That's correct.
And that's why he's here, so.
That's correct.
Great. I bet if you got in touch with him, if you found it was loud, I bet he would do something about it right away, so I would encourage you guys to communicate if you find it that way.
I am willing, Brian, I am.
Absolutely, Christine.
Good.
Great, awesome.
That's good. Merry Christmas.
Great. Do we have, you have a motion?
I think I made a motion, yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
Thank you.
There's a motion by Mr. Vignani, second by Mr. Danny.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the ink keepers license for 2017? Excuse me, ink keepers.
Ink?
I missed an N. The inn at Situate Harbor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will the board of selectmen vote to issue a bed and breakfast license for 2017 to the Cliffside and Oceanside Inn?
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the bowling and electronic game license for 2017 to First Situate Bowlaway?
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the movie theater license for 2017 for South Shore Cinema?
Second.
Second by Ms., Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following Class II license for 2017? Seacrest Auto, Driftway Auto, Inc., McBriens Diagnostic Repair.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Of Sting. Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following Class III license for 2017? Ryan Allen LLC and Ray's Repair Shop.
Second by Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, of Sting.
Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following seat, uh, septic, septicage disposal license for 2017? Alltown, Inc., Rosano Davis, PF Spencer, Sporito Environmental Services, Ronby, Inc., who's that? Do you know?
Um, I have to look that up, I don't know if the shop name is...
It's a renewal?
Yes.
Thought I knew them. You wanna hold off on that one? No, no, I just don't recognize it.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll move the board of selectmen vote to renew the following restaurant, all alcohol climate, that's it.
Wait, what's that?
There you go.
Thanks, Tony.
There you go, I already did it.
You did one.
Sean, did you have Sting in the septic?
Yeah.
No, 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 I didn't, no, class two, yeah, the class two and three.
Yeah, the second last and the third last.
Okay.
The class two and three, yeah. Okay, we'll have a discussion about remote access participation.
So do you want needed...
Absolutely, yeah, I, you probably get some backup and stuff from it.
Um, yeah, just trying to get there. So, I wanted to bring this before the board again, I know you, you reviewed it, I think, a couple of years ago before I was on the board, and it's come to my attention from several committee board members in the different committees that I'm a liaison with, and mass general law allows us to manage, and I'm trying to get the backup here, but allows us to manage, to provide remote access for some committee members. Obviously, there's some different rules with regards to voting, roll votes, whether or not, you know, we're not obligated to provide technology to allow that, but I, I do really feel that the way in which the world has moved, you know, folks work remote, it's a mobile workforce and if we're gonna continue to recruit good, qualified people in town who work full-time, it may not necessarily be able to be at every meeting 12 months out of the year, it provides them with an opportunity to participate during those times at which they are unable to be physically present. And it certainly isn't the norm that I think we would promote, not to be physically present, but gives us some flexibility during those times when a committee member, and I'm not really talking about us, although it can apply to us, but more our committees, to continue to be able to recruit, you know, good, good qualified folks that can, that wanna participate, but that, you know, do shy away because, you know, they, they do travel, or they may be remote at certain times and they can't be there physically. So I just thought it'd be good for us to discuss again and, and see if you're open to reconsidering adopting that here in Situate, because it has to be adopted at the local level in order for it to apply.
I mean, I think it has its positives and its negatives. I think it's very difficult to engage in a meeting remotely. I think if you come in and you wanna, if you have something to say or something to interject, you can, but being on a, you know, a conference call or whatever, you just don't have the same level of intensity and level of participation as if you're here. And I can see somebody doing it on a, you know, a piece-by-piece situation, but to make it a policy where somebody would actually rely on that continually, I don't think, I don't think it would be the best...
Yeah, I don't think it should be a, you know, a consistent, and actually, there's actually reasons that are permissible. So it's either illness, personal disability, an emergency, military service, or geographic distance. So there are some guidelines within the law that help you...
Yeah, but geographic distance is pretty vague. I'm in my car.
Well, not only that, but you, I mean, we, I have some committees that were the, some of the people actually out here during the winter months. So, I mean, I don't, initially I thought this is a great idea and the more I looked at it and some of the backup, I, I sort of turned the other direction again, but, but again, some of the, a lot of the committees that we'll have, or including our own, there's enough people on here so that if, if I'm gone or you're gone or something, we can still actually have, have it. Now, in the instance of a, of a very important meeting or vote, I, I don't know if we could do that without a vote, like...
You don't get to vote.
Well, there are specific guidelines with regards to that, too. So you have to do a roll call vote, so it's a different type of vote.
Right.
It's not just a, you know, a or n, you have to obviously make sure that everyone clearly identifies their presence.
Right. So, I mean...
In time, I might see this happen, but I don't know right now. I'm not, I'm not against it to the point, I just don't think, you know, I think when you put this in place, it's all-inclusive, so somebody can just be a remote member to a committee.
All the time.
Where, I don't think that's what we want. I think if somebody were to miss a meeting occasionally and came in remotely, then I think that would be fine. I'm thinking of like a ZBA meeting, you know, I think it'd be impossible to do that remotely.
Well, I think there are certain boards that you absolutely can't do it. ZBA, anything that requires a plan that you need to look at or...
Right, conservation.
Yeah, conservation.
See, I, I think it's a great idea going forward. The, the one area that I think where I can see where people could utilize it is where it says personal disability. You know, if somebody's, there's a disability component to it, it's hard for them and they're not gonna be able to be participating, then I think this is valid. The other ones, geographic and military service, I mean, if you're in the military, as much as you love your town, you're probably gonna be more focused on what's at hand and where you are and, and the dangers that lie there. Personal illness, if you're ill, I mean, I, I would think similarly, if you can't make the meeting, then you're probably not gonna really physically and mentally be there because of your personal illness. An emergency, again, if there's something urgent, you're not gonna be there. I mean, mentally, you're gonna be thinking what the urgency is, you know, if a loved one's in the hospital or somebody's personally dying or something. So I, I see the disability as a component going forward, but I, I think it's something that we should strive to try to do and, and put it as one of our, our goals going forward, you know, like we have so many others. I mean, I missed the last meeting, we were talking about expansion of the sewer, that obviously I think that's a higher priority to make sure that we get that going and some of these other things, but bless you, I think it's something that we shouldn't ever to try to do, but at this point, maybe feel it out a little bit more. It's up to what the board thinks.
I just think it needs some brackets around it that say, if you do it three times or something, then it's not, you know...
I agree with you that, there, I, you know, I think some research needs to be done and I'm happy to do it if, I'm not clear if local entities are able to amend the state law. Are they?
They are, actually, there was supplemental information for your packet that I see you didn't receive, so there's lots of stuff on that more that I can send you.
Okay, yeah, and so this is just up for discussion, so we can, you know, continue to look at that, 'cause I, I do agree with you, there need to be some parameters wrapped around it, some boards that maybe we don't wanna apply it to. I, I do think we should consider the, I think it might help us recruit some good folks, too.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, it's one of those things, you, you have things flashing in my head that, so you have a committee meeting, all of a sudden you have all these, these Skype devices around and there's only one other person in the room and everybody is out at the same time.
Can you imagine if everybody on TV gets to see everybody?
Yeah.
So, let me just clue you in, that's how half the corporate world works.
Yeah, yeah, it's go to meeting and all that.
So, you know, they're all on a screen, on a video screen, so it's really not that unusual for the rest of the way the world works.
But for, you know, for public meeting like this, or...
You just have to be someone turning them.
Yeah. Just saying.
Just to cut out, put the face on the computer on the cutout.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into some of those, the additional information that you have.
Yeah, I can get it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, no, no rush, obviously we're not gonna implement it on the 20th, so.
Okay. Do we have any correspondence?
We do, again, from Comcast.
Forty pages long.
Yeah, but, the first one, I, actually, there's one before then, I'm sorry.
Wreaths?
On December 17th at 12:00 noon is National Wreaths Across America Day, which is taking place at the Cituate Common, Lawson Park and Cudworth Cemetery in coordination across the country. The Town's Veteran Services Department is the way in which to honor folks that have passed or to honor a current veteran, please contact Ed Cavell at the American Legion if you would like to participate and put down a wreath in memory of somebody, and that is on the 17th of December. So that's the first one. And then, as I previously said, Comcast, for all you sports fans, just to let you know that they will be continuing to carry Fox Sports, but they are, actually, they're removing the lineup of Fox Sports on January 1st, so...
Really?
Yeah, so check your, your listings there, they'll be sending out notification. And again, more information from Xfinity with regards to different content and different changes in channels that are taking place, as well as starting December 20th, prices for certain services and fees will be increasing by Xfinity.
Oh, that surprises me.
So, consumers will be notified and they're notifying the town in advance. So, double check, make sure you check your mail, just, once again, rate increases from Comcast coming forward.
And less programming.
Yep. And I think that's it for correspondence, right? Don't see anything else. Just see a lot of Comcast information, and that's it, regards to correspondence.
So, does anybody have anything they wanna discuss? Or have to talk about?
All of us.
Other business.
Just a couple of quick things, I want to open, we had a, I may mess up the name, the Open Space Committee?
Recreation Plan.
No, no, the one they didn't hear, the plan, what they talked about.
Open Space and Recreation.
Open Space Recreation Committee. Great turnout, it was there, a lot of people came with a lot of good ideas regarding maintenance of fields, new fields, beaches, open space. It seemed to me that, well, I know we have to get the, the plan in place so that we're able to get different grants and stuff from the, from the Fed and from the state, seemed a little broad, and I think we got that across in the meeting that they kinda hammered down a little bit and get specifics in terms of what the goals are gonna be and what, what we should focus on, but I thought it was a really good start for us to kind of get the priorities of what, you know, in line in terms of when we start thinking of things, what, what the town and what the plan aims for towards us using finances and, and services and energy towards open, open space and recreational stuff, so I thought it was good. A lot of special interest people here, you know, going for their own, own piece of the pie, but I think there were enough of them that it got a good big picture. And on that, what Field Committee as well, went to that meeting and they're talking about their needs and, and they've taken it to the point to find out what fields the towns need and what, what they have and what the inventory is and what they should do, and they're a little bit confused in terms of what, what you can do on certain spaces and they're talking about whether they need some sort of consultant at some point in time to say, okay, here's what we have, what can we do with that? You know, with, with some of the changes, you know, just like every other thing that's going on in town that needs to be done, but with, with the schools being built and fields being taken away for, for different spaces, there, you know, the town's a little bit in a pinch right now with fields, which is why we're talking about the Clap Road property and other things, so I think they're moving in the right direction as well. And what else, that's, that's all I have in terms of meetings for this week.
You know, the only thing I was gonna raise is that at some point, maybe Trish, I guess I should talk to maybe Pat Galvin and Frank Snow, he's chair of the COMCOM, right?
Yes.
I was talking to Ronnie Simon and of course Ronnie Simon is the one who owns RC Farms, it's the last existing, shall we say, farmer in the town of Situate. A lot of people talk about how, you know, Situate's heritage is, is the seafront, it's also the agricultural component, the last farm that exists is, is functioning there. He had land that he was using and renting from Hornster Farms or in that area in Norwell, it's been taken away, and of course, I was saying, talking to him, I was thinking, you know, I think some of the land on the West End, even though it's conservation, one of the purposes for conservation is also agricultural, and I think that, you know, it would be very helpful for the last farmer who lives here, pays taxes here and is trying to, you know, sell produce here to its own people, that we take a look at maybe some, some of the acreage that's out there and try to see if we can utilize it or have him be able to utilize it to continue, and so that's something I was hoping to see and maybe we can take a look into, because I'd hate to see, hate to see that go. You just don't see that many farms around and they do a nice service, you know, it's organically grown and it's a great, great benefit to the town. That's it.
It's a good idea. I don't have anything.
The other guy, who's responsible for First Friday, Stella Harbor, besides John and Marty? Is, is it the Merchants Association?
Who's responsible for it?
Or is it, or is it Chamber?
No, it's, First Friday is actually the Merchants Association that puts it on.
Were you guys around Friday night?
I drove through it, it was packed.
I heard it was crazy.
Unbelievable. What a, what a turnout, what a great thing, Rudolph.
Of course, that might have been because of the parking lot, the, the directions.
Is that, were they ever one jammed up?
The gingerbread houses at the Noah, which drew a lot of people down there.
Oh shoot, that's what I also wanted to say.
The gingerbread house?
No, Santa.
By the parking.
Santa. Santa came to town on the boat and it was a great turnout.
He didn't fall?
And he didn't fall in the water?
No swimming event.
That's awesome.
And, great, ton of turnout, walked down Front Street, was in, he's either known as the, the movie theater, one of the two, is where he was there and greeted all the students, so I think, again, brought a ton of people, as you're saying, for First Friday down into the harbor for...
Saturday morning.
For Saturday morning.
And I just say that, 'cause I was, you know, down there and I bumped into a former Citizen of the Year in Norwell, and I gave him a hard time, Jeff Fitzgerald, and I said, jeez, you know, you don't do this in your town, but you come to my, our town, so. It, it's just, it's just a real nice event, John, Marty, pass it on, I just, I hope everyone did well, that's, it's great.
And I think, as I know John is gonna say if I don't say it first, just reiterate, shop locals, holidays, you've got a lot of local merchants in North Situate, Green Bush area and in the harbor, it's right around the corner, they're your neighbors, go and shop there instead of going to those big malls.
Shop small, two times your points on American Express at the same time. I just have a couple of things, I, I wanna thank Antonetta, this is her first year doing the, the renewals and she did a great job, along with help from Michelle and as well as Diane Wells, who is volunteering, helping out in their office. And the other thing I have is, I think tonight was sort of like an open house at the Egypt Country Store where they're, they're starting a Veterans Voice Bookstore. It's gonna be veteran-authored books in print, audio and electronic, so that everybody's aware, and I, I do believe that they're, it's active as of today. They've got a lot of featured authors here, which I won't, I won't go into right now, but that's all I have. Next we have some housekeeping, some, a vote to release some executive session minutes.
I think they have the regular minutes, yes?
Right, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, I skipped over that, approval of meeting minutes, yes.
One second, Mike.
Move that the board of selectmen approve the meeting minutes for the November 15th, 2016 meeting?
two thousand sixteen meeting?
Second?
Second by Mr. Vignani, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sting.
Oh, you went there, John, right?
Right.
Okay.
That's what you guys were talking about sewage.
Right, so four zero.